Good evening, Council. And residents, it is 6:30 on Tuesday, June 15, 2021. And it is the City Council regular meeting. And we have got lots of folks on here this evening. And the first thing up is our roll call. And Lita?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblyn.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Here in person.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Okay, everybody's here. Meeting accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21, or on the YouTube channel, or on Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting, or on the city website, again at www.samamish.us/tv21, on YouTube, or on the Comcast channel within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Ross, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor. First up, I have approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes for the agenda? I know we had one extra addition for executive session, and it was, hang on. And it was in the first executive session. And I do believe. Hang on, I want to make sure we haven't updated on what I've got. It is? Okay, then we're good. Okay, and do we have any other changes or additions to?
Take care. Under the exec session.
Okay.
We need Subparagraph F.
Okay, I'm looking, and I believe she said it was added. Let me double-check. Yes, it was added.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, and next up, we have got emergency management, and Andrew Stevens. First of all, thank you, amazing job.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Moran, councilmembers and city manager. My name is Andrew Stevens. I am the emergency manager for Eastside Fire and Rescue. I wanted to take this evening to reflect upon the city of Samamish's response to COVID-19 over the past year and a half, and highlight many of the successes of those citywide efforts. Last February, roughly two weeks into new city management, the city of Samamish began executing what would be its greatest exercise in continuity of operations. Facing a never-before-seen deadly threat, and regulations and public health orders that seemed to change or evolve daily, city departments and divisions quickly came together to develop strategies and tactics that ensured that 100% of the city's essential government functions were maintained without disruption. I'd like to highlight just how rare that is. Now, you have to remember that the U.S.'s response to COVID-19 began just north of Samamish. And I would say that most jurisdictions in the area were directly impacted by the virus as outbreaks spread throughout their workplaces. However, due to the expedient nature of Samamish's response, the flexibility and competence of its staff and leadership, Samamish was able to quickly enact workplace protections, enhance social distancing and environmental hygiene protocols, and develop a robust telework program that not only ensured that continuity of operations were maintained, but more importantly, not a single instance of workplace COVID-19 exposure was reported by any employee. The countless hours and effort put forth by every Samamish employee to strengthen and ensure the city's resiliency while facing this new and extremely dangerous threat should most definitely be celebrated by this council. And while continuing the day-to-day work of city governance, Samamish also took on the responsibility of developing and managing community recovery programs. Staff worked directly with the Washington Department of Commerce and Treasury to ensure that the Federal CARES Act monies were spent efficiently and in a manner that would ensure the full reimbursable amount was achieved. It would also streamline the reporting requirements and provide the city with the flexibility to continue providing COVID-19 relief even after the federal timeline for spending CARES Act funding had expired. Through these efforts, the city provided several rounds of small business and nonprofit grants, greatly assisting those most affected by COVID-19 pandemic and the cascading consequences of state and county mandated restrictions. And you may remember that when the city developed a strategy for how the CARES Act funding would be spent, the Washington Commerce Deputy Assistant Director described it as one of the more intelligent ways he had seen a jurisdiction utilize the funding. Now, I was not planning on providing a detailed report on any remaining funds this evening, since I believe that you have an upcoming agenda item that further discusses any remaining CARES Act reimbursements and American Relief Plan funding. Now, the residents of Samamish also overwhelmingly came together and adhered to the COVID-19 restrictions and mitigations. Over the past 15 months, Samamish's record for positive cases, hospitalizations, and deaths due to the virus were always some of the lowest per capita in the county. The vast majority of residents sought to comply with COVID-19 mitigations, such as mask mandates and social distancing. They supported local businesses and restaurants through a variety of delivery options, and by purchasing gift cards and donating to nonprofits assisting in COVID-19 relief. While 14 Samamish residents lost their lives to the disease, that is, that number is a fraction compared to the neighboring jurisdictions in this region. And without the whole community approach to combating and slowing the spread of this virus, taken by most, those numbers surely would have been higher. Now, the will of Samamish residents to overcome this pandemic and contribute to the greater public health good could not be made more evident by the vaccination rates seen across our community. While 70% of the population being vaccinated against COVID-19 has been seen as the benchmark for the nation and most communities, the majority of Samamish is sitting far above that figure. Over 95% of all residents aged 12 and older have received at least one dose of COVID-19 vaccine, and roughly 85% of that same population has completed their entire series. This is a remarkable achievement that Samamish residents should be extremely proud of. A strategic partnership consisting of the cities of Samamish, and Issaquah, the Squawami Tribe, and Eastside Fire and Rescue undoubtedly contributed to the extremely high vaccination rates not only in Samamish, but across the communities throughout the East Side. The Saturday marked the final day of vaccine operations at the Squawami Tribe Vaccine Partnership, our drive-through COVID-19 vaccination site located at the Lake Samamish State Park. And since April 8, we have delivered over 15,200 doses of COVID-19 vaccine to populations primarily residing here in the East Side. Seeing where those patients came from and the equity in which these operations were conducted was extremely validating, and it goes to show everyone that the hard work that went into establishing a mass vaccination site on the East Side was well worth the effort put in. Now, along with our drive-through operations at Lake Samamish, Eastside Fire and Rescue personnel delivered nearly 6,800 vaccines at the Squawami Casino, and roughly another 1,000 doses through our mobile vaccination teams, targeting the most vulnerable populations in our service area. EFER conducted pop-up clinics at cultural centers, faith-based facilities, pedestrian shopping centers, and HO ways in both Issaquah and Samamish. And EFER personnel also assisted our local school districts with their vaccination efforts, serving as the post-vaccination medical observers for thousands of schools-aged children. We worked with the human services personnel to identify and schedule vaccination appointments for vulnerable populations and individuals who may have otherwise had difficulty navigating the traditional public health systems. And we worked with your communications staff to help get the word out and share useful information on vaccine-related efforts. We also partnered with the business communities to provide incentives and takeaways to our patients post-vaccination. And for the past several months, dozens of EFER firefighters have contributed to the various vaccine operations that were simultaneously underway, working long days, sometimes evenings, and beyond their traditional work shifts. And besides our staff, over 200 volunteers from our communities stepped up and contributed nearly 4,200 hours of their time to assist at the Lake Samamish site, filling all of the non-medical roles and responsibilities come rain or shine. I want to personally thank everyone who was involved in supporting or contributing to these critical vaccine operations. It's a great feeling to know that while many would have been content to let others step up and fight this pandemic, we were not. From early on, all of the partners involved rose to the challenge and proactively found solutions where others may have found dead ends. COVID-19 has been the greatest disaster of our lifetimes, with over 600,000 fatalities here in the U.S. alone, and 3.8 million deaths worldwide. And while this pandemic is nowhere near over, I do believe that we have most definitely reached a turning point where we no longer have to fear that things may once again turn drastically for the worse. We are beginning to see states lift COVID-19 restrictions, and it's widely expected that Washington will soon follow with reopening the state. And while this is welcome news and relief to many who have, for the past 15 months, have desperately sought for a return to normalcy, I do urge caution, and I request that we all remain vigilant and respectful to those populations who cannot yet be vaccinated. I hope that during this crisis, my updates have provided both you and the residents listening with useful information. And I would be happy to come back as needed if the situation warrants any additional updates. Thank you. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, excellent. Okay, hang on, let me. People, different people are having problems hearing you on and off, so let me go to. Okay, first up, we've got Councilmember Ross.
Andrew, thank you very much for the report. I don't recall if I heard this in your report, but maybe I missed it. Today, there was really good news that 70% of King County has been vaccinated. Is that first shot for King County, or is that fully vaccinated?
Well, it is fully vaccinated, but it is ages 16 and over.
That's still phenomenal. That's good.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. That is fully vaccinated, but it is ages 16 and over.
It's really good. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who've got any other questions? Councilmember Odell, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Madam Mayor, not a question so much as a comment. Andrew, we got a note today from Sound Cities advising that the mask requirement will be lifted as of June 29 was the day I saw. I see it's June 29th or June 30th. I'm not sure which, but it's one of them. It was conflicting information in the note.
Yes, there has been, I guess, a report today saying that because of the 70% number that King County was lifting all mask mandate requirements, there could be some more specific information on what that means. It could be transit. Now, employers and businesses can still require that, but that is the same word I got, June 29.
Airlines as well.
This is a King County mandate, so unsure at that time.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so when exactly are we going to get the update on the CARES Act spending, and when we can invest the remaining funds into the community? We did pass a motion as a council that all funds from the CARES Act must be spent on COVID-related, as well as helping the community. And I know that a fair amount of our expenses for the vaccination site should be reimbursed through the emergency funds. So when will we get that update?
Mayor and council, we anticipate that we will have a full report for you on July 6.
Okay.
Andrew and I spoke about the FEMA issue. And Andrew, you might just explain briefly. It's not quite as cut and dry, but we will do our best to receive the FEMA reimbursement and make the application.
Yeah, I can comment on that.
Okay, that's great, because I know that while while things are returning to normal, there are still businesses suffering, and we do need to be prepared for when the eviction and foreclosure moratoria begin to lift. We need to be prepared to help people so we don't create a new economic crisis.
Okay.
Andrew, did you want to comment on something? Sorry.
I can't speak to FEMA public.
The other comment I wanted to make, what? Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we are going to be going through the process now that the vaccine operations have ended of submitting for FEMA public assistance, both for just our normal emergency protective measures for the past 15 months, as well as the vaccine operations. It is expected that we should be able to claim reimbursement for these vaccine operations. However, it is not a guarantee, because we have to still confirm that working under the tribe's legal and sovereign authority is enough for the state to grant us that reimbursement.
Okay, thank you. And I did want to just make a comment that, obviously, the COVID pandemic has been a catastrophe of epic proportions worldwide. But I do want us to recognize that the number of people who have lost their lives due to COVID is still less than the number of people who lost their lives during World War II. So I probably wouldn't categorize it as the worst tragedy. Unfortunately, we have done worse to each other. So I just want to make sure that we don't minimize those other impacts to people. Thanks.
Okay, any other councilmembers? Councilmember Ross?
This question's addressed manager Ru. I've been getting emails from constituents asking when we can show our, or the staff can show their smiling faces in City Hall. And we're hearing about full mask removal on 6/29. And I'd really like to hear before we go on break, sooner than later, if, and the last report was all the way in September. The council, although they're in recess in August, there's no need for us to stall operations in implementing, whether it's full staffing in City Hall or a graduated staffing in City Hall. But that all can be done, starting now through the recess till September if necessary. But with that said, I'd like to see before we go to recess, and maybe perhaps by the next meeting, what is the plan? What is our benchmark cities doing? I don't want Samamish to be an outlier lagger in getting back to work, because our taxpayers expect people in City Hall to help them.
Well, as we speak, I received a report today on feedback from the directors through HR on a matrix of who might be able to work remotely and who would be working at City Hall. And so we are working through the machinations of how we get people back to work and how we keep them safe. I think the system is moving a little quicker than many people had anticipated. But we want to keep the public safe, and we want to keep our employees safe. And whether we can have something on the 6th, but we will have a report on July 13, at least outlining, before you go on break, what we propose to do.
Thanks, Dave.
Councilmember Odell?
I just wanted to say I support Councilmember Ross and his request. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Andrew? Excellent. Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have public comment. And pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to the city clerk, lhatchey@samamish.us, and the city council, at citycouncil@samamish.us. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 p.m. the day of the meeting. Phone number 1-571-317-3122. Access code 929-348-197. Lita?
I see that we have seven people who have called in to provide public comment tonight. I will unmute callers in the order that they have joined the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say unmuted, and then you will have three minutes to provide comment. 15 seconds before three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted. If you have called in to provide public comment for the hearing tonight, please say so when you are unmuted, and I will place you back on hold and return you when the council reaches the public hearing. Please start your comments by stating your name, the city that you live in, for the record. I will now unmute caller number one. Caller number one?
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, are you here for the public comment?
Good evening.
Or public hearing comment?
I'm here for the public comment, please.
Okay, thank you. You can begin.
Do I begin?
Yeah, begin by stating your name and the city that you live in, and then you can begin your comment.
My name is Leo Graham. My address is 22609 Southeast 44th Lane, Issaquah. I'm speaking tonight regarding the Providence Heights Schools project and continuing concerns regarding its impact on Providence Point community and Lapping Jacobs Creek. I live in Forest Village, a part of the Providence Point residential community. We in Forest Village have the privilege of having 900 feet of Lapping Jacobs Creek flow through our community in a steep canyon. We have carefully protected the stream by establishing wide, undisturbed setbacks. As you know, the creek is one of the few remaining Kocany spawning streams discharging to Lake Samamish. You also know that the school district has proposed a large high school and an elementary school on their property and its bordering Providence Point. Among many impacts of the project is the new impervious surfaces of the project, which will dramatically increase the stormwater runoff and will direct flow into the residential neighborhoods of Samamish and into the creek. To take account of the 4,200 new daily vehicle trips anticipated at the school, a wide new intersection is required on 228, which adds another six acres of impervious surface, which will also flow into Samamish residential neighborhoods and into Lapping Jacobs Creek. The city of Issaquah has told the district that the stormwater impacts from the project of the school site and the intersection must be considered together in a cumulative technical information report. However, the district has refused, and Issaquah has so far been content to let this major defect ride, possibly because most of the stormwater will flow into Samamish, not Issaquah. We know Samamish takes stormwater impacts seriously. You have adopted a more restrictive stormwater manual and have embarked on a basin plan for the creek, considering the impacts of stormwater. As additional protection, you are now working on a retrofit of older stormwater facilities, an item on the consent agenda for tonight's meeting. While we applaud the effort, we note the city is contracting with AHLBL, AHBL, excuse me, a Tacoma engineering firm. This is of concern, because that same firm is working with the school district in its efforts concerning stormwater documentation, and is the author of the plan to separate and bifurcate stormwater impacts from the schools project and the intersection. We ask the council to carefully consider whether AHBL has a conflict of interest and is following best engineering practice in assessment of the stormwater impacts on the Samamish residents and resources. In summer, a careful review of the stormwater impacts is essential for protection of the creek and its Kocany resources, including the entrance of the Providence Point community. We ask council director's staff to insist on careful and comprehensive review of the total schools proposal, including stormwater impact, and require comprehensive, not piecemeal, review. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you for your call.
I will now unmute caller number two. Caller number two?
Yes, my name is Larry Wright, and I'm the same as Mr. Graham. Can I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Can I go ahead now?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Larry Wright, and I live at Providence Point. My name is Larry Wright, and I live in Providence Point community at 3675 224th Place Southeast. I have comments on the extension of the current moratorium on the building permits while the city is engaged in its balancing land use and mobility analysis. I want to comment on two aspects of the moratorium that I believe should be considered in this process. First, responsible agencies already recognize slowing of growth, including Issaquah School District and its recently adopted capital facilities plan. That plan shows a substantial reduction in forecasted enrollment growth, especially at the elementary level. The elementary school project at Providence Heights is a prime example. Current data indicates flat to declining elementary growth for the next several years, which does not support a new elementary school. This capital facility plan will shortly become before this council for approval. I encourage you to decline to approve. Second, the Issaquah School District proposes two large schools. The traffic from these schools threaten to further choke off traffic between the city and I-90. These schools will require adding a large complicated intersection at 228 to accommodate an estimated 4,200 new vehicles per day. 1,170 of those new vehicle trips will be generated during the peak traffic hour. Amazingly, though the parameters of this new intersection are known, to my knowledge, the school district has not submitted an application to the city of Samamish as required to use its right-of-way for this project. As a result of these delays, even the most recent transportation and sewer planning in the city fails to take account of the large project that threatens major delays to the community, both during construction and later during school operations. It's not known if the school intersection will pass concurrency, and is not part of the comp plan or the six-year transportation improvement plan. Its impact on further transportation facilities, including nearby intersections at Southeast 40th and Issaquah Pine Lake Road, is not known. The council should adopt its continuing moratorium. Moreover, the massive intersection that is required for the facility will further choke off traffic through the city. This issue requires analysis and attention. Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me this time. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute caller number three. Caller number three, are you speaking for public comment or the public hearing tonight, or for both?
For public.
For public comment.
Thank you. Please begin by stating your name and your-
Hello, council, this is-
It's Paul Stickney.
Okay. Hello, council, this is Paul Stickney of the city of Samamish. I'm calling about my email today about correcting some inaccurate information. I sent in an email with some PDFs, and this also hangs together with the scoping comments the city received in July of this year and several comments on the Samamish Civic Web. It looks like Samamish has knowingly overstated the number of housing units that were constructed here from 2006 to 2019. Also, the number of non-home-based jobs created looks like it was increased by roughly 50%. I still have to do some work on this analysis from past comp plan, so that's just an anecdotal number at this time. The city has incorrectly inflated its affordable housing numbers by roughly 45% because imagine housing was done in 1998 and those units were built before the city incorporated. The sewer issues with the Samamish Plateau water have been sort of aggrandized, I would say, because there's immediate and interim solutions that are coming in the next two years, and they just had another solution from yesterday for doing smoke testing to solve for INI. It's interesting to note that Samamish grew at roughly 31% the pace of King County over our last 20 years as compared to 1980 to 1999 in King County. And the other thing I would say is that the scope and the aims of the balanced land use and mobility EIS are too narrow, symptom-focused, and simply are off the mark. So inaccurate information needs to be corrected so that it gives a good factual basis for people's opinions. Misleading narratives that are founded on either parcel or inaccurate information are not acceptable. And concentrating the EIS and studies on symptoms rather than their root cause or ailments is not a good idea. So there are solutions, which is to obtain missing sufficient information, then broaden the scope of the balanced land use EIS and studies by adding
Fifteen seconds.
...that optimize land use in our community.
Amen.
Okay? Then contrast the holistic, sustainable consequences of both minimal, very low, and optimal growth, then make wholly informed changes to the comp plan and development regulations based on all those facts and consequences. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute caller number four. Caller number four, are you speaking for-
This is Mark Cross here.
Are you speaking for public comment or the public hearing comment?
Just public comment.
Thank you.
So this is Mark Cross here in Samamish off of Thompson Road. First, I wanted to congratulate the city and the Parks Department, particularly for the completion of Central Park. I got a chance to walk it, and it's a beautiful new addition to the city, and I'm very impressed with it, and I think it's going to be an asset into the future for everybody. The main reason I wanted to call in tonight is that I had been encouraged earlier in the year that the city was asking its lobby folks in Olympia to see if they couldn't get money to improve Thompson Road, both the road and the drainage. The state did appropriate $3 million towards Thompson Road, but really, for the project to move forward, it needs to be included in your planning document, the Transportation Improvement Plan, which you had a public hearing starting on June 1st. I assumed you'd be adopting the document so that both the permit agencies, the staff that you have that would work on this project, and the granting agencies such as Transportation Improvement Board would know that this is a real project, that you actually want to go ahead and build it. Although construction in 2023 sounds like a long way off, it implies that you really would spend money in 2022 on design, the public process, the citizen input, bringing it to council for their review probably. And the Transportation Improvement Plan needs to be adopted because it also informs the budget for 2022. I'm hoping that the council would consider whatever else you have going on that is keeping you from adopting a Transportation Improvement Plan, which you did not do last year, that this year you would adopt one, at least it would include this TR Project 101 for Thompson Road, along with the rest of the projects that you don't have concerns about, and so that they could move forward with some certainty. It's going to become difficult for staff to hire design consultants, do the environmental review, do the public process, and then be ready to bid in the fall of 2022 so that you can construct in 2023.
Fifteen seconds.
And the grants that you've gotten, or the money that you've gotten, doesn't last forever. So I do ask that before your August recess, if you would consider possibly paring down the project list on the tip and adopting it so that there can be certain-
Thank you for calling, Mark.
I will now unmute caller number five. Caller number five, are you speaking for public-
Hello, I'm Channing, calling to Samamish for public comment.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm speaking for, yes, public comment. Like I said, Channing Maddox of Samamish. Hello, and good evening. I'm resident of 21015 Southeast 14th Place since March of last year. I'm speaking today for the development of Southeast 14th Place. Southeast 14th Place is a public gravel road. It has a single lane flanked by two ditches. The public portion of the road is approximately 225 meters long. Because of its nature, it has caused numerous incidents, especially in the winter months, of vehicles entering the ditch. One resident's car skidded and was stuck in the ditch adjacent to the road during the winter of 2020, resulting in costly repairs. I also personally know of one incident in which a DoorDash driver was delivering to my residence and ran his truck into the ditch at night, requiring a tow truck to pull him out. The road is prone to potholes, which can cause foot and ankle injuries while walking down the road. Many residents walk on the road, including myself, walk down to Detective Mall or visit the nearby Ebright Creek Park. I restrain my children from running down the road because they have tripped on the potholes and fallen numerous times. There are at least four families that I know of with their young children totaling more than 10, including my own two sons that live on the road. The children often run across the road, playing on their respective yards. It would comfort me as a parent to know that stopping distances for vehicles would be shortened by a paved road. Vehicles also kick up a significant amount of dust, dirtying my fence to home across me and the vehicles themselves. My neighbors and I submitted a ticket to the city via the See Click Fix web application, issue ID number 10046108. We were informed by a capital project engineer that development of the road is part of the city's long-term planning street reconstruction program, but the program is currently not funded. With the length of time the road has been in place and undeveloped, it seems the program may be unfunded for quite a certain time, and may be so for the foreseeable future. I speak today to bring attention to this matter. I hope to get this program funded for both the safety of my neighbors that frequent the road and the children that play in it. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute caller number six. Caller number six, are you speaking for public comment or the public hearing comment?
I'd like to speak for both.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mary Victor, and I've lived in Samamish for 20 years. I want to continue a little bit with the topic that Mark Cross spoke with before this evening when he spoke for public comment. The Transportation Improvement Plan was supposed to have a public hearing this month. It was removed from that evening in the first week of June, and a date has not been mentioned for when it might be brought back up. As Mark had mentioned, there are multiple grants that can go toward this project. There's $3 million from the state from legislative priorities, which really just talked about the drainage at that time. And then there's a King County flood grant, I believe, is being applied for, and there's also a Transportation Improvement Board grant, which could be applied for, but I believe that last one at least would need the TR 101 for Lewis Thompson Road Street and Storm Improvements to be on the Transportation Improvement Plan. So based on the fact that this project really needs to happen, and Mark Cross had spoken to the timeframe of it, you need some amount of engineering, maybe as much as $800,000 for 2022. I'd ask that you do a mid-biennial budget correction, and you fund that from the existing dollars or the monies that have been granted and can be used. And then, in order to get the project done in 2023, the city should take stormwater funds to pay for most of it, because a lot of it is drainage, and then you're not really doing road improvements, you're doing non-motorized or sidewalk improvements on the north side or the uphill side of the road. So I would like that to be done. So if for some reason council and the city cannot come together to get a Transportation Improvement Plan passed, I think it has to be done by June 30th or July 31st, I can't remember which, but if it cannot be passed, I would ask that you look at doing the six-year stormwater CIP to put it on that list, so the drainage portion could be mentioned, and the planning and all the activation that Mark Cross alluded to could be happening so that we could be ready to hit the ground in 2023 with construction. We also have the East Lake Samamish Trail, which the county is working on. They're working on the segment from about the old 711 area to Mint Grove, and then that's supposed to happen this year in 2021, and then in 2022, they're supposed to go from Mint Grove all the way up to Inglewood Hill Road. That project design is supposed to include an implementation of a walkway that would go from the trail to the traffic light at Lewis Thompson Road and connect to East Lake Samamish Parkway, where there are no sidewalks, and people get there, and there have been See Click Fix tickets. People have written in about that separately, about the need to be able to handle pedestrians. So for drainage, because it's really a stormwater-
Fifteen seconds.
...it needs to be done, just like the Inglewood Hill, stormwater tightline was done. We need to have the tightline put on Lewis Thompson. We need the project to go. We do need sidewalks on it, but you can stagger it with a stormwater CIP and a Transportation Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mary.
I will now unmute caller number seven. Caller number seven, are you speaking for public comment?
Hi, yes, my name is Aurora Merchant. I live at-
Are you speaking for the public comment-
For public comment.
...or the public hearing? Or both?
For public comment.
Thank you.
For public comment?
Yes, thank you.
The reason I was calling, yes, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me well?
We can hear you.
I was calling in because I actually sent in, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, I was just trying to make sure. I sent in a couple of photographs. I have been commenting on this area for quite some time, and it has to do with the area of the conservancy zone. But my main issue that I have been trying to address, and they've not been addressed yet, has to do with issues that really concern me are two parts, but share the same underlying issue, and that is the connection of permits issued by the city through the city's recommendations. Improve all required permits have been obtained for active projects prior to the issuance of building permits, including listing, meeting, or exceeding all related conditions. The permits and related conditions should be available to the city employees required to review projects and easily accessible to the public, including the details of what has been granted under the permits and the conditions that must be met to meet compliance. If the city does not integrate or even keep the permits and conditions for the same projects issued by or through the recommendations internally on the project, which are in progress, how can it govern the use or intent of the permits with the structure or scope of the permits and ensure the protection outlined in the conditions are or will be implemented? The city should require from the related agencies, should require all permits from the related agencies to be acquired and integrated and available to prevent any liability, especially when the projects have been granted, any type of variance or conditional use permit. It was surprising to me to learn the lack of information or integration regarding permits covering the same project in place when the description for the enforcement of the permitting system explained in court by a city employee was managed and governed through a complaint-driven process. This is an issue because of the fact that in order to be managing and have a shoreline management program, the city is required to actually have an enforcement process and permitting system in place. That means the city of Samamish essentially has a permitting program, but has no way of actually enforcing the permitting process. And this is disturbing because if you see the pictures of what has happened with four consecutive variances granted within approximately one year of each other for four large parcels in a conservancy zone, which now has a dock on every single lot or a home, there is not a single lot, not even the 30-foot lot, that's only 30 feet wide, that not have something built on it. And this is supposed to be an area that is limited or low-impact development.
Fifteen seconds.
You see the photographs, you can see why. One, I don't know how that's considered low-impact. And so my concern is that if that is what the bandwidth for where we're setting the bar for the planners, then how on earth are we supposed to actually believe they're actually protecting the-
Thank you for calling.
Madam Mayor, that is all the callers that we have for tonight.
Thank you to everybody that called in. Make sure I'm in the right spot here. And the executive session is for collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42.30144A and litigation pursuant to RCW 42301101I, and to receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee pursuant to RCW 423011F. It is 7:20. I'm going to assume that we are going to need an hour. So we will be back here at 8:20. Okay, I want to welcome everybody back. And the first thing that we have up this evening is our consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion on the consent calendar?
Can we pull up?
I heard pull up-
Yes, please. Sorry, I'm struggling to get to my-
Okay, I didn't hear what number that-
Yeah, can we pull off the budget update?
Okay, do you have a number for-
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to the number. It's the budget update item?
Number nine. Number nine.
I don't have the number off.
Okay.
Because I feel like that goes with the agenda item that we have, and we should approve it together.
Yep, that's exactly what we're going to do. Put it with, we actually, can we, we'll put it with New Business, because they do go together, if that's okay. And any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Okay, first up then after that would be our unfinished business and that is Phase Two Developmental Regulations and that would be, I believe, David Pyle.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully I am able to share my screen. Can someone confirm that it is shared?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Great. So I am here tonight to provide the council with a status update on the Development Regulations Update Phase Two project. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to orient you as to the calendar and remind the council of when this will resurface with the, on the council's agenda this fall. Also to provide you with the status on the Planning Commission's work. The purpose of the meeting is not to get into the details of the various code amendments that the commission is considering, rather it's to provide a brief overview of the status so that the council is made aware of the progress that the Planning Commission is making on the topic. Just as a reminder to the council, the process that's being used in the Development Regulations Update Phase Two project is, it's a consultant-supported project. We do have Framework who also has subconsulted out to Code Studio to support the project. We didn't first start out the project using a community advisory group. We are now engaging with the Planning Commission to help refine concepts and to find solutions to some of the problems that we had identified, based on feedback given from the community advisory group. We will then be bringing this back to the city council following the August recess. Just as a matter of orientation, there was a bit of a hiccup with the publishing of the agenda bill and we apologize for that. There was supposed to be an Exhibit One that was attached, it did not show up. Also, some of the hyperlinks that were included in the agenda bill were not active. Those have all been corrected and the agenda bill as it stands now is published correctly. So I do apologize for any inconvenience there. Generally, we broke up the topics that were identified by the Planning Commission through past work on Phase One and the council through past work on Phase One and by the community advisory group into three topic areas. Green topics, which were considered to be low priority and less complex, that didn't require discussion with the Planning Commission to develop solutions. Yellow topics were medium priority and warranted discussion with the Planning Commission. And finally, red topics were the most complex to address and where we spent most of our time with the Planning Commission, working on solutions prior to drafting code. Generally, just an overview, we've come up with many refined solutions with the Planning Commission, they've been great to work with. Some example topics that the commission has taken on are neighborhood design principles and standards. And this, if I can remind you, is something that we wanted as a city for quite some time. When dealing with subdivisions, we have not had any design principles and standards for subdivisions. It was up to developers to design it how they saw fit. So what we're trying to do is to add some design principles and standards that will help us get the outcomes we want with projects like subdivisions. We're also looking at site development standards, standards related to the design of streets and connections, requirements for pre-construction meetings, speculative clearing restrictions, construction management plan requirements, sustainable site planning and low-impact development requirements, criteria and guidelines for protection and integration of natural features, arterial frontage standards, clearing and grading permit thresholds, and a planned unit development chapter. And some of these things are refinements on what we already have in our code. However, many of these are new additions to our code that will give staff the proper tools to hopefully get the outcomes that we as a community are looking for. Additionally, there's also one major transformation that's occurring and that is a migration to a unified development code. What this does is it takes all of the disparate sections of code that we currently rely on and that are oftentimes difficult to find. It makes it hard on applicants, it makes it hard on community members who want to know what is allowed on the project next door, it makes it hard for planning commissioners, council members, really anybody who's trying to read our code. Our code is not user-friendly. So what we're doing is we're unpacking the code and keeping the sections, the language that's in it, but reassembling it in an order that is more linear and more user-friendly. The Planning Commission is not actually reviewing the Unified Development Code. The Planning Commission is reviewing the Unified Development Code outline. And the reason for this is we, because we're taking on a two-part project, first we're updating the code and then secondly, we're migrating to a Unified Development Code, we really wanted to get the code updates out of the way and then port those over into what will be the final product, that is the Unified Development Code. It can be kind of confusing if we do it other ways. We talked a lot about the best process to get to the final product, which is the Unified Development Code. And working with the consultants and with staff, we felt that this was the best process to ultimately get to the goal of a final Unified Development Code that incorporates all of the changes that we made as part of the Phase Two Development Code updates. So far, we've had four community advisory committee meetings that ran from September of 2020 through January of 2021. To date, we've had five Planning Commission meetings that started in March and have run through just the last meeting of the Planning Commission on June 3rd. We do have eight meetings remaining. We have a Planning Commission work session that was just added on June 17th. That's going to be this Thursday. We have a Planning Commission work session on January 1st and then a Planning Commission public hearing is scheduled for January 15th. Following that, staff will be working closely with the consultant to reformat the work and prepare for city council. And at that point, the city council is tentatively scheduled to pick it up in September, work on it through October, November, and into December. The target goal for us would be adoption by this council in the end of December and a date effective of January 1st, 2022. Additional outreach we're working on is we have reached out to master builders and offered a June 30, 2021, meeting with them to walk through the code changes and make sure they understand them. This, I feel, will help cut down on any confusion and if they are to provide public testimony during the Planning Commission public hearing, it will be very helpful for them to be oriented as to how the code works, what the code changes are that are being proposed, how those work, and give them an opportunity to ask questions before providing comments. So we do always appreciate when someone or an organization provides comment, that it is educated comment and is really focused on specific issues as opposed to broad comment because we have a harder time responding to just really general comments. We prefer specific directed comments, so that hopefully that will help with that. The current status is we are in the final research and code drafting stage, anticipation of the upcoming July 1 and July 15 Planning Commission meetings. Our consultants are working, you know, full-time schedules to keep up with this. The council did approve on consent tonight an amendment to the consultant contract and that is due to additional meetings that we wanted to add in order to offer sufficient time to discuss complex topics with the Planning Commission. And we did add an additional meeting with the council that we had not originally included in the contract. And we wanted to add additional time for code drafting because some of these topics are complex and we want to make sure we have adequate resources to work through them. So with that, if you have any questions, noting that this will be coming to the, it'll be going to public hearing with the Planning Commission in July and will be coming to the city council if everything goes as planned and according to schedule in September.
Okay, in the queue. Let me see what the questions we have. Okay, first up, we have got Councilmember Train.
Yeah, first and foremost, I just wanted to thank David Pyle for all of his work on this, the staff that he has, the consultant. So before I get to the Planning Commission question though, David Pyle, is, are you, what is your assessment of the consultant and the work that they're providing based on the fact that we just approved more spending? Are we satisfied? Are you satisfied?
At this point, yes. Yeah, at this point, I am satisfied. I, you know, the next month and a half are absolutely critical for this project. And part of that is, is that we need to take all of the work the Planning Commission is doing and we need to port that over and reassemble it into the Unified Development Code format so that the council can start to see how the Unified Development Code works and build your comfort with that so that you're able to review it, understand how it works, you know, ask any questions on that. So yes, I am satisfied with them and the next month and a half is going to be absolutely critical regarding their work and our working with them as staff.
So that leads me to my second question on the Planning Commission. I mean, I've looked at, I've watched their meetings, I've read their packets, looked at the information that they're looking at as well. Are, does, does staff, do you and your staff believe or think that the Planning Commission needs any direction or communication from the council to help them refine or hone in what needs to be done? Or are we better off, you know, doing the exact opposite and just letting them do their job and wait?
So the Planning Commission would always enjoy and benefit from a member of the council joining them to give, you know, comment at the beginning of the meeting if you felt like there was guidance that was needed. Generally now, at this point in the process, we have the direction, we felt we had pretty good direction from the council on this prior. The community advisory group was very helpful in our vetting some of these problem statements that we were trying to solve. And we feel like we are able to work with them on these topics. Now, this is a very technical, complicated code update. You know, there are things that we spend, you know, I've spent years working on and recognizing where we have holes in our code or problems in our code, such as we don't have a construction management plan requirement for a construction permit. And what happens is you end up in a neighborhood like Inglewood or Tamarack where there are private streets that are narrow and there is no plan for keeping those roads open and they're trenching down the middle of the private driveway and the neighbors can't get out. You know, these are the kind of things that we're working on with the Planning Commission and trying to make sure that we're getting the right size level of regulation in place. So I feel like we have good guidance at this point. The Planning Commission has been absorbing a lot of the material and they've become more comfortable with it and more willing to be vocal and comment on this. So I've appreciated working with them on that. We do have three more meetings with them, so we do have some additional time to spend on the topic and I'm looking forward to further comment from them.
Yeah, I just, I publicly just wanted to say that the Planning Commission has been doing the yeoman's work here and doing a really good job as well as the staff. So really appreciate your leadership in that, Mr. Pyle. And I just ask that you, you know, stay healthy, stay safe, and just let us know if there's anything that we as a council need to do to support you in this process. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for the time.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. And David, thank you for the rundown on what's going on with all of this. It's a whole bunch of work, no question about it. And I am wondering, I was taken aback this afternoon when I got the Exhibit One finally and looked at it. First of all, my eyes aren't that good. But the question I do have is, this is nicely color-coded, but I'm wondering, is this like a 90% document, 75, 50% document in terms of what the final product may look like?
So that is a user guide, so I would say that's probably more in terms of 25% document. That is merely the user guide to the topics. What we've done is we've taken apart that template and we have pried out each of the topical areas and then we have worked up code amendments in response to each of those topics that the Planning Commission is currently working on. So when it comes back to you, you'll see that we'll still have this user guide, but it will then relate to specific code sections and code language that has been updated. And you'll see, you'll see the full solution vetted out in code with explanation of why that code section was updated and how it was updated, right? So the idea here was that we wanted to first identify what the problem statements were. We wanted to meet with the community advisory group to better understand the problem statements in an effort to find solutions. And once we had some general concepts for solutions, then we wanted to take those concepts to the Planning Commission, get their feedback, have a discussion with the Planning Commission. And at that point, then, the consultant started writing code where new sections were required or amending code where code amendments were required. We also had a parallel, have a parallel project that's underway, which is the reorg of the code for the Unified Development Code. So what happens is now during the summer break, what we'll do is we'll finish up all of the code amendment language and then we'll, you'll basically see two documents. One is the code amendments that were made to the existing code and then you'll see the Unified Development Code and where those ultimately landed. They'll be cross-referenced. So each document will point to the section in the other of where it came from or where it went, right, if you will. I hope I'm explaining this properly. So we've got quite a feat ahead of us in the next month and a half to transform this into what ultimately the council will pick up.
Right. And I recognize this is a tremendous amount of work for you guys. The basis for my question though is based on history. In a couple prior councils, we got things like the Shoreline Master Plan or the Critical Orderance Draft from the Planning Commission. And unfortunately, it didn't go well and the council wound up essentially ripping it up and started over again. I would hope to avoid that here. I sincerely hope to avoid that because it wasn't fun, it was a lot of work for us too and kind of in a way is not healthy for the Planning Commission itself. I know that early in September, we take this on, but I'm wondering, I think before, I'm assuming you will do this, before we actually get this on ourselves, we get a chance to, number one, look at what you've done so far and number two, comment on it between now and then, so that any concerns of the council can be addressed before we get to a point where we have to actually do something about it. It might be useful, I hate to do this to Kristy and Karen, but we used to have regular meetings with meetings with the Planning Commission as mayor and deputy mayor on issues like this so that it was an attempt to keep things from going sideways at the 11th hour. But it's just a suggestion. What do you, Dave, what do you think about that?
So we do have workshops planned with the council in the beginning of September when we come back from the recess. We do need time as staff to work through the documents and make sure everything is packaged appropriately for the council, for you to pick it up. We hadn't factored in additional council meetings in July or August on this topic. Really, we plan to finish up with the Planning Commission, get their recommendation, and then roll this out to the council in September. There have been check-in meetings, there was a meeting with the Planning Commission and the City Council where this was one of the topics of discussion. There have been iterative meetings leading up to this point. One of the things we did commit to with the council was regular check-ins, that's why we're here tonight, just to make sure we're reminding the council this is ongoing, if you want to check in with the Planning Commission and attend one of their meetings or read the minutes, you know, watch the videos after the fact, those are all available. Sometimes I watch those meetings on a fast playback speed, it's more efficient that way, so I've done that as well. But I would recommend that as a means of watching and seeing what commentary the Planning Commission is providing. And if you disagree with that commentary that they're providing and you have concern for it, then feel free to reach out to me and perhaps there's a different course we would need to take.
Great suggestion, Dave. Thank you.
Dave, can you do me a favor and perhaps get to, get to the council a list of the meeting dates of the Planning Commission? And the best thing for us to do is to try to follow those meetings, because that's what I basically do, is try to follow when they're on a topic like this and then I do watch those meetings.
Yeah, what I'd be happy to, what I can do is send out an email that includes past meetings and hyperlinks to those meetings where it includes the video and then also a list of future meetings that are coming up in case you want to tune into one of those live.
That'd be awesome. Thank you so much and it's great to see you. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. I don't see anybody else with questions. Any other questions, going once, going twice? I think that's it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing we have is we have got a proclamation for Juneteenth Day is June 19th, 2021. And I am going to ask Councilmember Trane to read that for us.
Samamish, Washington, proclamation of Juneteenth Freedom Day, June 19th, 2021. Whereas we acknowledge on June 19th, 1865, the last group of enslaved African Americans were informed of their liberation in Texas, two and a half years after the implementation of the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas in order that we may never forget the evils of slavery and its aftermath, we acknowledge the injustices and the suffering of blacks that experienced under slavery. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the freedom, the achievement and contribution of Black Americans, past, present, and future. And whereas, to promote racial healing, reconciliation, and justice, it is important to recognize the significance of Juneteenth and continue engaging in dialogue on race relations. And whereas, during this Juneteenth event, we appreciate the African American experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, nationalities, as we commit to working together towards equitable experiences and opportunities for all those in our community. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Samamish and Mayor Karen Moran, on behalf of all of the residents, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, to be Juneteenth, 2021, in the City of Samamish. And I encourage all to join in these celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing tonight for the Traffic and Currency Certificate Moratorium. Okay, so to start us off on this, this is Ordinance 02021-529. And this ordinance was passed by the City of Samamish on April 20th, 2021, establishing a six-month moratorium on new applications for concurrency certificate under SMC 14A-10, with the exceptions for specific application types. In accordance with RCW 35A.63.220, a legislative body that adopts a moratorium shall hold a public hearing on the adopted moratorium or interim zoning ordinance, blah, 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 sorry, within at least a 60-day period of time, which is why we are here today. Okay, with that, we are going to open up the hearing and then we will be hearing from anybody who has got public testimony, we will be hearing from staff, and then we will have any debate amongst council members. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Alita, do we have anybody on the line?
We currently have two callers that have been waiting.
Okay, excellent.
I will unmute the callers in the order they have joined the meeting. When is your turn? You will hear an automated voice say unmuted and then you will have three minutes to provide comment. Fifteen seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city that you live in for the record. I will now unmute caller number one. Caller number one.
Hello, my name is Mary Victor. Yes. Hi, my name is Mary Victor. I live in, I lived in Samamish for 20 years. I did send in a short email for a public hearing comment, specifically I am and remain concerned about the number of vacant lots for single-family home development, which people will buy at some price, either low or high, and then they will try to build upon regardless of the circumstances. Council decisions are pushing and driving development into areas that have vacant lots that exist already, and a lot of those have critical areas and do not have adequate facilities, meaning they're missing essential sewer and drainage or stormwater management. Relief is needed so that more septic are not allowed or put into areas with challenging topography, erosive soils, or that are constrained by one or more multiple hazards as defined and mapped originally by King County way back in 1990 for the Growth Management Act when it was adopted at that time. There are reasonable use exceptions which are being applied for in order to build biggest homes possible rather than just a modest home as described by the Department of Commerce in the GMA Critical Areas Handbook. This puts neighbors at risk as well as impacts the environment. It is very hard and time-consuming for city staff. There are options, we can make changes to the RUE program. There is also a docket request that was approved for transfer of development rights, which can provide relief because it would allow vacant lot owners to sell their development rights to somewhere else that the development is better suited and where there will be adequate facilities and services by the time of occupancy. This was not, would and will not require that the city need or pay money for this because the owners and the builders and developers could and will sell those development rights to another owner, builder, or developer. And on page one of your ordinance, it's page 92 of the 192-page packet for tonight, the City of Samamish gives the number of single-family home, existing vacant lots, as 1,246, which provides ample single-family development capacity, in the words of the ordinance. 16% of this number is located in historic plat areas with one or more or multiple hazards, and the GMA says that buildable lands should avoid critical areas and hazards. Just doing math below, there's about 160 Inglewood plat lots that are vacant and 40 Tamaracks, so that's about a total of 200. That is the 16% of 1,246. Beginning with the City of Samamish's Ordinance 2013, long before I ever spoke, number 373, may you define historic plats as less than 1977, when King County first required drainage. There are not adequate facilities for wastewater sewer or drainage, stormwater facilities on location or in capacity throughout these historic plats. There have been five emergency surface water management ordinances, there were subsequent stormwater amendments, and I really would like it if you would look at doing something so we don't consider to see ongoing development without adequate facilities.
Thank you for calling.
Madam Mayor, the second caller has dropped off, so that concludes the public hearing comment.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a presentation that will be coming with this from legal or from anybody from staff this evening? Mr. City Manager.
Karen, Dave's dropped off for the evening.
Oh, Dave dropped off, okay. Okay, so I'm going to assume that that is...
Mayor Moran, I'm...
Okay. I hear Lisa. Okay, Lisa, take it away.
Hi, Karen. So, staff did not anticipate making a presentation tonight. We did so when we adopted the moratorium on April 20th. The purpose of tonight's public hearing was just to take testimony. And I don't know why my camera is not working. I apologize for that. I am here and dressed.
Okay, then I will move directly into questions from council on this. Okay, I will go directly to questions from council on this and I'll, depending on what that is, I might go into a roundtable. We will start with Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you so much. I just wanted to ask about the housing numbers, the growth numbers that were included in this. It's my understanding from King County, from the City of Samamish, and even from city staff presentations in the past, that the housing numbers in this, in these whereas clauses are overstated, that the actual growth between 2006 and 2019 was closer to 3,200 homes and not 3,900. So I was wondering if anyone could speak to that and how that wasn't resolved.
Councilmember Stewart, I'll try to answer that and David can interrupt me if I misspeak. My understanding is that those numbers were numbers that were the result of the April county planning policy meetings, asking cities if any of them would be willing to reduce their targets.
That's not the question, I'm sorry, Lisa. My question is about the stated, how many housing units we've built between 2006 and 2019.
David, can you answer that?
I can try to, try to explain that. Yeah, so there are multiple different data sources. The number that you see in the whereas clauses and the number that you see being used in other reporting is the Office of Financial Management report that King County is using officially as the number of housing units that were created. There are different reports that resulted from the Urban Growth Capacity Study and from our permitting center and our permitting system. However, there are discrepancies even within the permitting system. So I think it is very hard to reconcile the reason why there is a gap. What we have opted to do is to go with the number that King County is using for its growth target conversations through the countywide planning policies and the number that King County has opted to use through the Urban Growth Capacity Study analysis. All of the different jurisdictions reported out of their permit systems, the units achieved, King County opted not to use those numbers as part of the Urban Growth Capacity Study and King County instead opted to use uniform data that comes from the Office of Financial Management as a method of comparing across jurisdictions. Now, the reporting that goes to the Office of Financial Management and how those reports are generated are not part of that process and much of the data that we're talking about here predates my time at the city significantly, if we're talking, you know, back as far as 2009, 2010. Obviously, I had nothing to do with those reports at that time. However, you do bring up a point that there is a discrepancy between the number that is presented from our units achieved analysis done as part of the Urban Growth Capacity Study and the report that was provided to King County and the number of units that were created according to the Office of Financial Management. As a matter of policy, we made a decision to go with the number that King County is using, which is the Office of Financial Management number.
Okay, just to state for the record, King County has officially stated that the numbers from the Office of Financial Management are estimates only and they are not precise numbers. And we have much more precise numbers from our permitting systems. So I just want to state that for the record, that that is a number that King County has stated officially is only an estimate and is not necessarily an accurate number.
If I may add on to that, the number from our permitting system is also an estimate. The issue there is that there is what I call generational or cultural differences in how the permit system has been operated. I would say if you went back in time and looked at the different methods the city has used to track units, there is inconsistencies from year to year. That comes from the various people who have been managing that system and the cultural differences in how they've operated it. So I would also suggest that that is not necessary, it's an estimate, it's not necessarily a pinpoint accurate number.
I guess I have to ask a question of staff. I mean, it's a pretty big discrepancy, it's almost 750 units different.
Could I have a point of order for a moment, if I could, just a moment? Could I have a point of order?
State your point.
I'm not sure I understand the purpose of the debate tonight. Are we here to relitigate and re-debate this ordinance or are we simply having a public hearing on the ordinance? So is council supposed to reinvestigate and reexamine a ordinance that we voted, I believe, five to one to approve? Why is it being relitigated and rediscussed as if we had not already approved it? Thank you.
Okay, let's move on past something that has been discussed and voted on by the council.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but may I ask a question? My understanding of a public hearing is to receive public comment and consider the public comment that has been received. And this was information received via a public comment. So are we stating that our public hearings are just because we're mandated, that we're supposed to have it, and we're not actually listening to any of the public comment received and we're just ignoring it?
No, the public comment was submitted and we've already discussed that.
Is that what I'm hearing from the council? That is your desire?
Councilmember Stewart?
No, we got new public comment for the public hearing.
That's okay. And all we can state was that was already, has already been talked about and has already been, has already been talked about. We don't need to discuss it twice.
Can I get a point of, can we get a read from council?
Okay, so just to get...
I have a point of order, please. Could we please get a read from our city attorney on whether the purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive public comment or to receive public comment and then use that public comment to reexamine, relitigate an ordinance that has already passed? Could we get a read on that, please?
In my experience, Councilmember Gamblin, the purpose of a public hearing is to accept testimony. Typically, the body, the body does not engage in a back and forth with either people who are testifying or with staff unless the matter has been designated for discussion after the public hearing. I'll defer to the chair as to how she wants to proceed with this particular item. And again, sorry, no camera working tonight.
Okay, so, folks, let's stick to the normal, let's not have a debate. Let's continue on with the hearing as per our normal process.
Okay, so I'm confused because my understanding of a public hearing is to receive public comment and that we should consider that public comment as your direction, Madam Mayor, that we are receiving public comment as a formality only, and we should not be considering any of that in our determination here.
Councilmember Stewart, you can certainly consider public comment if you have new public comment.
I am looking at new public comment that came in this evening. That is, it is new public comment that we received today, and that is what I am basing my questions on.
But is it on something that we have already voted and had discussion on?
Well, we already voted on the moratorium, but the public comment is on the moratorium ordinance, so that's why I'm asking your direction. Are we going to consider the public comment or are we going to ignore it?
Councilmember Stewart?
Madam Mayor, perhaps if I can add, I don't...
Thank you. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm not sure if you have the agenda in front of you, but typically when council discussion is to follow a public hearing, that would be so noted in the agenda items. Oftentimes, the council holds discussion open when it first adopts the legislation. The public hearing under statute is required to occur within 60 days. We've done that here. The purpose of the public hearing is to take testimony. If there is a desire for the council to argue and debate what was already adopted, then in my view, that would be so noted in the agenda material, and perhaps one of you has those in front of you to see if it does have a section for discussion.
I have another question for legal counsel. Given that this ordinance was passed as an emergency and there was no public hearing ahead of time, as would be standard for normal changes in our code, if we are not to discuss the public comment received during this hearing, then the decision of the body is that we are not to consider public comment at all.
That's not true. You can always schedule a discussion on this item later. If staff, in conjunction with the mayor and the deputy mayor, whoever sets the agendas, decides that it wants to reevaluate this moratorium at some point in the future based on the comment you've received tonight, you're free to do that.
But once we close the public hearing, we're essentially saying we're not, that the matter is closed. I mean, that's been, if I understand the mayor, that under the normal course of, she's saying we should handle it as we normally do. Normally, we have a public hearing, we receive public comment, we consider that public comment and have the debate and make a determination at that point in time. Once we've closed that, we move on. We don't come back to it later. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're clear whether or not we're really considering public comment or whether we just do this as a formality.
Councilmember, this is not about not considering public comment, this is about bringing up an old topic of the numbers, which we have brought up numerous times and have put to rest. So please, consider your public comment, but don't bring up topics that have been brought up numerous times and put to rest. So, if we have public comment that you would like to bring up, that is new public comment, please bring it up at this time.
Well, there is new public comment that we received tonight that shows information about those numbers and shows the data behind those numbers. And so while we may have talked about the numbers before, we did not have that data before, so it's fine. It is clear that you don't want to consider this public comment. I'm fine with that. I took it very seriously. I thought it was very well thought out and very thorough, and I appreciate that.
And I think David Pyle answered that very well. Did you have any other questions for Mr. Pyle?
Well, I'd love to have more questions, but I'll save us all time. Councilmember Gamblin will just point of order me, so let's go ahead and move on.
Councilmember Gamblin, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick statement. Number one, I don't arbitrarily point of order people. The point of order was very specific to bring the city attorney in to make a determination on whether or not...
Councilmember Gamblin, I'm going to stop you, and I'm just going to speak to your...
I feel I should be able to answer accusations, but anyway...
I agree, but stick to your issue.
Based on the input from the city attorney, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, and, let's see, next I have got Councilmember Ross.
The item brought up for public comment was addressed very well by Mr. Pyle, and his explanation that it is the King County estimates effectively talks the same language as the growth numbers are from the county. So I think that's a really good basis for the numbers, and therefore, I'm very satisfied with that in the current moratorium. It's very justifiable and explainable.
Thanks, I was going to say something similar relative to the comment we received, but I did want to point out in our agenda bill, it says that this evening's meeting, the city council should open the public hearing, which we did, accept public comment, which we did, close the public hearing, which we did, consider public comment, and deliberate on considerations related to the moratorium, where I think we, and I apologize because I've had all kinds of connection issues, so I may have missed some of what council members stated. I think we steer clear from other issues not relative to the moratorium and the numbers. And I do think David Pyle answered those questions relative to the number differentiation. So if we're talking about the numbers still, I think that is a fair topic. Outside of that, I do not think that they are fair topics. If that helps, maybe it doesn't.
Okay, and with that, I think that, do we have any other questions? Okay, I actually have a couple of questions.
Well, I'm done.
And I have one for Mr. Pyle, and one that is for Lisa. David, the question that I have is in related to TDRs, and it was brought up tonight, and I don't know when, and maybe you can help me with this, when the council that put in the TDR program, I'm not sure if you know when that was, but the council came up with this TDR program, which is a great idea.
I'm sorry, Mayor, point of order. Sorry, is that relevant to, I thought we were discussing the moratorium. My point is while I am a huge proponent of the TDR program, I'm not sure that that is not referenced in the moratorium at all. So is it relevant to the moratorium? Because I don't, I think we're still on that agenda item, are we not?
Okay, it was related to public comment, but you're right, we guess we won't pay attention to all public comment, just what you want to. Okay, then I guess...
Well, no, right now we have... Oh.
Then I guess we'll listen to, Lisa, my question for you would be...
The public comment that was received was specific to the moratorium, which is an agenda item.
Lisa, my question for you has to do with liability issues. So the longer that you are, and this comes to a question that was posed to me earlier this week, I guess it was last week because all my weeks run together, and along with the, in a moratorium... Pardon me, Deputy Mayor?
Should we be talking about liability issues in, I said, should we be talking about liability issues in open session, or should we be in executive sessions to talk liability?
No, this is just a general...
Mayor Moran, I would prefer not.
Okay, it's more of a general question.
Please go ahead and finish your question there.
All right, it's more of a general question, but that's fine. Okay, well then, I can't ask either of my questions, although I wouldn't have asked if I didn't know your answer, but, okay. So we'll go to Councilmember Stewart.
So, I know this is going to be a sticky wicket here, but there is a question that was raised in the public comment around the number of affordable units, and I was wondering if we could get some information on how those numbers were calculated.
So that information in the whereas clauses regarding the number of affordable housing units was based on a report that was provided by Arch. So I do not have the nuts and bolts as to how that calculation was assembled, so I would have to go back and ask the source of that report for some additional information.
Okay, because as the 51, because as it states specifically in the whereas clause, it says 51 units built with Imagine Housing, but the Imagine Housing units were built prior to the city's incorporation. So while they may exist in the city of Sammamish, they certainly weren't built during the period of time that the rest of these numbers are from, and they were built prior, they were built in Kohani and not when Kohani was part of the city of Sammamish. I would also just like to provide, for clarification for those watching at home, that the 116 units that are referred to in the whereas clauses are specific types of affordable housing. When King County is speaking to affordable housing, they're talking about housing that is affordable in particular income brackets, and so I just want to make sure that we get clarity for people that these type of restricted housing units are a very, very small subset and a very specific type of affordable housing. Again, King County tends to refer to housing as affordable in the 0 to 30% area median income, housing units that are affordable for 30 to 50%, affordable 50 to 80, and 80 to 100, and over 100, and that the important numbers to look at are making sure that we have housing that is affordable to those, to people in those various income brackets, and that these affordable units, again, are a type of units that are restricted and managed by an organization like Arch or Habitat for Humanity. So I just want to make that clarification for those watching at home.
Mr. Pyle is, just for clarification, is Kohani included in all the numbers that are in the rest of the whereas's?
My understanding is yes, those are our current numbers.
Oh, great, okay. So it wouldn't have just been in that one whereas that's in all of the whereas's in the, so when we included it, we included it in all of our calculations for the moratorium?
As Kohani is now part of the city, it...
Well, I was just wondering, because when we counted it for all of our other units that, you know, we used it, we used Kohani in all of our other figures. I was just making sure we used it when we were figuring out other things for our moratorium.
Numbers are based on the city's current boundary.
Great, thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I was going to make that very point, which is the Imagine Housing numbers in Kohani, while Kohani may not have been in the city of Sammamish, we absorb all those numbers from a growth target perspective, et cetera, so it makes sense that we would use those numbers from Imagine Housing that are in Kohani because Kohani is part of Sammamish. And so we use all of the numbers from Kohani, and I think that was the exact question you were asking, Mayor, and I was going to make that point, so I'm beating a dead horse.
Okay, so before we go back for another round, I'll make sure we don't have any other questions. And do we want to start another round? Okay, Councilmember Stewart, are we just going to start a debate back and forth, or do you have another question on a different topic?
No, it's fine. I just, for consistency's sake, it just seemed odd to me that we would calculate that based on 1998 when all of the other numbers are looking at, you know, growth from 2006 or since incorporation, so it just seemed out of place and inconsistent, but it's fine.
Well, I believe that if we're looking at growth since the incorporation timeframe, we would have been looking at the numbers from that 1998, 1999 timeframe, would we not, Mr. Pyle?
I believe we were looking at the total number of affordable units that exist in Sammamish today. I think that was the point that was being made.
Great, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, that's it, okay. Hold on, we need to close out the hearing and close this issue, and we are done with this issue for this evening. Nice job, everybody, we're not too terribly off target. Okay, so we are on to new business. First thing for this evening is the following ordinance, and it is for the biennial budget. Wow, we just are loaded with good stuff tonight. Okay, the 2022 biennial budget, and with that, oh, we've got people present, and this one is, Erin, take it away.
Yes, good evening. Erin Antin, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, and I have Christianini as well with me, Deputy Finance Director. So we're going to quickly go through a reminder of what the 2020 year-end position was as setting context for the action that's in front of council tonight, which is consideration of a budget carryforward request from the 1920/20 budget into the 2122 budget. So that's the actual action in the ordinance that's being considered for you tonight, so let's go ahead and move to the second page. There we go. So we're going to start with the year-end financial summary, and then we're going to move into the 2122 biennial budget adjustment itself. Next slide. Okay. Okay, so we're going to cover the year-end 2020 picture and then move into the 2122 adjustments, beginning with the 2021 beginning fund balance. So this is largely considered a truing-up process that we're doing administratively, as well as the carryforward of the expenditure. There's several other items that we're also including. You'll remember that we had come to council for an interfund loan between the Transportation Capital Fund and the General Fund, so we'll talk about that as that's being included in the ordinance action as well, and then a couple of the grants activities that have happened, both the CARES grant from previous 2020 period and the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, grant that has just recently occurred in 2021, and then the budget carryforward requests themselves, both, we categorize them operating and capital, so we'll move through that. Next slide, please. So for the 2020 period, just as a reminder, this was also included in the year-end financial management report. This is just a high-level overview for all of our funds. All city funds, we're excluding the interfund transfers. From the revenue perspective, the budgeted funds, 67.986 million, actuals were 75 million. So we had a, a positive revenue performance there of 7 million for 2020. And on the expenditure side, the budget to actual comparison there, 28 million below budget is where the actuals came in. So that was the 2020 picture. Again, that's going to drive the adjustment that's going to be needed for the Beginning Fund Balance in 2021, now that we're closing out 2020. So we're going to go into what's driving those revenue categories and expenditure, just at a summary level. We looked at the top 10 operating revenues. And again, the financial management report replies, or includes a lot more detail, if you wanted to look into all of those. But the top 10 operating revenues exceeded budget by 2.2 million. The other revenues by 6.2, largely the grants. And the actual capital revenues were below budget. So we had some softness in the capital revenues, and you'll see that in a minute when we take a look at the stoplight chart. The expenditures, just at a total level, operating expenditures, we're breaking that down by category. 11.13 million was on the operating side, and 17.64 million, the larger portion, was on the capital expenditure side. Next slide. So here is the budgeted revenues. This is the stoplight chart that's included in the financial management report. Again, giving you a little further breakdown on the top 10 operating revenues for the 2020 period that just ended. 50.9 million was the budget for the top 10 operating, and we came in at 53 million, so that 2.2 million. And then you can see which ones of those lines had over and unders adding up to the overall positive picture there of 2.2. Again, the top three capital recurring revenues, you can see that there was softness on the traffic and parks impact fees. Again, partially offset by the REIT performance. Real estate excise tax came in a little bit better than what was budgeted, so that helped to offset some of that. But in total, for capital revenues, we were down 1.3 million. The other revenue categories, you'll notice the asterisks there, so we've footnoted, that's the CARES Act grants coming in and the unbudgeted stormwater grants. So recall that the, we received a stormwater grant during 2020 for a property purchase. That was not previously budgeted in 2020, and so it came in as an actual revenue, which helped us outperform the budget expectation in the other revenues category. So all in all, for total revenues across the board, we're up that $7 million, and that's what the bottom line is showing there. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, this breaks it down by a total expenditure category. Again, the savings against budget of 28 million. And then the different categories show you the breakdown. Personnel, again, we had numerous vacancies throughout the year. That's driving personnel savings throughout the year. Had some savings in supplies, some savings in service and charges category. That's also where the, a large portion of the contingency existed during the 2020 budget period. So that's why that's showing up as savings, as we had unspent contingency there. We had some savings in both the Eastside Fire and Rescue Contract and the Police Contract. And then on the capital end, as the capital plans vary from year to year, and they can go from a 2020 project and then move into the 21 period. So as it spans fiscal years, you're going to see savings appear during the prior fiscal period, which in this case is 2020. We're showing the December 31st, and that we had savings of 17.6. The expectation is here, that's here, is that the savings that would show in 2020, if they're part of a carryforward request, you're going to see that as a request to carry that money into the 2122 period, as that capital project continues from the 2020 biennium into the 2122 biennium. And then the note there on expenditures include unbudgeted COVID-19 costs of 852,000. So this is showing the expenditure, and we're just drawing the line at December 31st. So we received the revenue in, in 2020. And then that, the checks paid through December 31st of 2020, we were still showing that 852,000 left to spend. Some of that, as you will see, is already being spent in 2021. And again, they mentioned that there'll be an update on that after July, here, July 7th meeting. Next slide, please. So then we're going to move in, so that was the 2020 positive performance overall on revenues and expenditures. So that kind of sets the context as we move into considering the budgeted carryforward adjustments. And then I'm going to ask Chris to go through the, the accounting of that. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Erin. Next slide, please. This is a summary, overall summary of the budget adjustments. There'll be three adjustments, or adjustments in three categories. Beg your pardon? I think it's on. So we'll have adjustments for Beginning Fund Balance, as Erin mentioned. Have revenue and expenditure adjustments, and the result will be the Ending Fund Balance will increase by 7.8 million dollars. And I'll briefly, briefly go over what makes up these totals in the next few slides. Next slide. This is the Beginning Fund Balance slide. Beginning Fund Balance will be going up 18.5 million dollars. Keep in mind that the 2122 original budget was prepared in August of 2020. And the results for the year were not known at that time. The actual results are available when the financial statements were completed, which was April of 2021. So it's typical to have the Ending Fund Balance be higher than was budgeted, because we assume last August that all of the expenditures that were budgeted are going to occur. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the revenue and expenditure carryforwards and additions. You'll note that both the revenues and expenditures have the same two numbers in the first two categories. So the interfund loan that was approved, it looks like a horrible number, 18 million. That's the result of the $9 million approval of the loan twice. So it goes in as a revenue to two different funds, and it'll be paid back, so it comes out as an expenditure as two different funds. Next is the American Rescue Plan Act. This also will have no effect on the bottom line. We will, we actually got yesterday the 2.4 million dollars that we're due for 2021, and we're budgeting to spend that. So same number on both sides. Transportation grants, we have two transportation grants that were not used up in 2020. So we'll be able to spend that in 2021. The, on the expenditure side, the 2.14 million dollars is what's left over of the money we received in 2020 that is available to spend in 2021. And we also have operating and capital carryforwards for total expenditures of 31.7 million. Next slide, please. So the interfund loan was approved on April 20th. And that's to loan up to $9 million from the General Fund to the Transportation Capital Improvement Fund, and also be paid back. So it shows as a revenue and an expenditure in both funds. It's really just a function of government accounting, taking money out of one pocket, putting it into another pocket.
Excuse me, it appears we've lost connection to the outsider just calling in.
Oh. Did I lose you, too?
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash. To enable audio controls, please click your audio pin, followed by the pound or hash sign.
Okay, can everybody hear us now?
There you go.
Okay.
Sounds like you're back.
All right, thank you. Okay, Chris, we're going to go back.
Can, can we back up to the previous slide, though?
Yep. Okay, is this where you lost us?
Actually, yeah, there we go.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, you were just about to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, so the American Rescue Plan Act shows up as the same amount for revenues and expenditures. So we actually received the money yesterday. So the council now can decide how they want to spend the money, but we have set up a new fund, as it was approved by council at a previous meeting. Has no effect on the bottom line, because it's the same number of revenues and expenditures. On the revenue side, we have two transportation grants that were not fully used in 2020, and they're available to be spent in 2021. On the expenditure side, we have COVID response funds that we received in 2020 that remained unspent at the end of the year. And so they're available to be spent in 2021, so we'll be adding that to the budget. The last two are the carryforwards. We have operating carryforwards of about 3.37 million and capital carryforwards of 5.8 million. Next slide. So this is a little more detail on the interfund loan. This was approved by council on April 20th. It's an up to $9 million loan from the General Fund to the Transportation Capital Improvement Fund to complete projects. We also intend to pay that back this year, so we have both a revenue and an expenditure in two funds. You're really just taking money out of one pocket, putting it into another pocket. Next slide. This slide is for the money that's available for COVID response. We had the American Rescue Plan Act money we got this year. The total that Sammamish has been allocated is 4.759 million. And we get it in two, what they call tranches, a word I had not heard before, two allocations. We get half of it in 2021. The other half is available 12 months from now, so that will be considered in the mid-biennial budget adjustment. The CARES Act funding, we received two grants in 2020, a small one from King County for business grants, which has been paid out, and a larger one from the federal government of almost 2.9 million. We spent a total of those two grants of 852,680 in 2020. Now, that's just checks that were paid out. The additional funds were designated by council to be spent, but they had not been paid out at the end of 2020. So for the budget, we'd need to move the remaining money into 2021. Next slide. And here we have the carryforwards that are being requested. The details of these are in the council packets. But as a summary level, we have 3.37 million in operating fund carryforwards, primarily in the General Fund, and 5.8 million in the capital carryforwards, which Erin alluded to. Those are mainly for projects that were started in 20, or underway in 2020, but not completed, carrying forward the money to 2021. Next slide. So this was the original biennial budget with an Ending Fund Balance of 54.8 million dollars. And next slide. And this is what the budget will look, look like after this adjustment, with an Ending Fund Balance of 62.6 million, an increase of 7.8 million dollars for the biennium. Next slide, Erin. Back to you.
Yes, so there was an update this afternoon, where there was a recommendation from the city manager and the Public Works Director regarding one of the carryforward requests that was for the Transportation Capital, Isaguac Pine Lake Road. So just want to make note of that request. That was on page 109 of the packet. There's the Transportation Capital, 920,000, that was originally in the request. So that's showing up in these numbers right now. So if council is to make a motion to approve, the recommendation would be to less that 920,000 request. So the motion, less that 920,000, would be consistent with the packet that's in front of you and the city manager's recommendation that came out this afternoon. At that point, I'd turn it back over to you.
Erin, can you help restate the last recommendation there that the city manager said on the transportation was less?
920,000. It was the carryforward request item related to Transportation Capital. It was the Isaguac Pine Lake Road design project that had, that was included in the packet for 920,000. And then the city manager and Public Works Director had sent out an email this afternoon recommending that that not move forward at that time, that particular one.
So from what you just said, that, for clarification, that's a carryforward?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Of, of less than 920,000. And then the, that's the carryforwards. And then the adjustments related to prior council directions would include the interfund loan, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
And, and then when you state the new federal funding, is that the, is that the money that we just received today? Is the new federal funding? Or is that the new federal funding to come?
It's the one we just received today. So we're adjusting the budget to recognize that we're going to receive that in 2021. So both on the revenue side, and then we authorize the expenditure as a budget to say we can go ahead and spend that money. So the prior council action was to establish a separate fund. So from an accounting sense, we're establishing a unique fund for that federal, for those federal dollars. And that's, seems appropriate, given the amount and the magnitude of the funds coming in.
Sure. Well, with, with all my questions asked, and I move that the council adopt an ordinance to amend the 2021-2022 biennial budget for carryforwards, less the carryforward of 920,000, and then the adjustments related to the prior council's directions, which would include the interfund loan, and then setting up the new federal funding.
I second that.
Looking for a second to that.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the floor, and we're going to move to discussion. And I'm going to go in order of what is in the chat box, which would be Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, Erin and Chris, thanks. You guys always do such a great job, really appreciate it. Can somebody mute? Because I'm hearing my voice on a delay, that makes it really hard. Thank you. Excellent. So one of the questions I have is there were $28 million of expenditures on services and capital from 2020. Did all of those get carried forward into the expenditures for 2021 and 2022?
No, it's not.
Because I don't know that I'm seeing that all in there. Okay, so what isn't getting done, I guess is the question? Because it, it doesn't seem realistic that we could just push it all into the next biennium and actually get all that work done. So what work isn't going to get done? Because we're not, we didn't get that done in 2020. And that's probably more of a, of a Dave question, not an Erin question, sorry.
I'd like to have Erin go ahead and go through it, because I'm not equipped to answer the question.
So I would say generally, the 28 million, so you're looking at expenditure savings against budget in 2020. So part of the difference there is when.
Right.
Rewind the clock back to August of 2020, when we were putting projections in to the 2122 budget for the beginning, beginning fund balance position. So at the time that we put those projections in, we would have had knowledge of where, of an estimate of where we would land at the end of 2020. So that that number, the ending fund balance of 2020
Right, right.
Would be the ending fund balance of 2021. So some of it is updating that estimate. So the actual recognition of where we landed is different than what we had estimated where we're going to land. So that's why you're not seeing the full 28 million moving into the 21-22 budget period. So you only saw a beginning fund balance adjustment of around 18 million versus the 28 million, for example. So tracking those two numbers. The other part of expenditure
Right, I guess what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
The other part of expenditure savings against budget would be budgeted contingencies. So if there were unspent contingencies that were budgeted in 2020, we would have held those contingencies as a budget in place until the year closes out. And then if they remain unspent, then those dollars are free, goes into the ending fund balance, basically. So it's not necessarily that work wasn't performed.
Right, and I think you said
Go ahead.
Sorry, Erin, there's a delay. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I was done.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, the contingency, you said, you know, a bulk of that was in that 7 million in the services number. But that leaves like 21 million in the capital, I think, roughly, or maybe it was like 17 million in capital. We know that a lot of times we have budget savings and expenditures because we just don't get the work done. And I'm just concerned that we have a lot of capital expenditures that we didn't get to in 2020, and our capital expenditures in 2021 and 2022 aren't really big. So it looks like we're not necessarily getting to all of the capital projects that we need. And I'm just kind of curious, what is it that we've potentially kicked down the road that if we have these savings now, that we should consider putting back in and getting these capital projects moving?
You know, Councilmember Stewart, in balance of the council, this is one of the things, we can go back through, and I can do a follow-up for the council on that particular question. But that was some of the issues that I was pointing out during the budgetary process, is that a number of projects, and the city seemed to budget capital projects more than what they could normally get done. It was what they desired to get done, but couldn't get done. And so you end up with carryovers or incomplete projects or projects that haven't been started. And so in the budgetary process, it looked like expenditures had been exceeding the projections, say, you know, in employee salaries, against the revenues of how much taxes were increasing. And we decided to make a recommendation that we pull back on the number of capital projects that we could accomplish, as you had a new city manager coming onboard, we were going to have a turnover in public works, and try to reestablish what we thought our manpower and contracting out could get done. So it's not a number that should be surprising, because that had been happening in prior years.
Okay, but we're still just not getting a lot of capital projects done, I think, is kind of what the challenge is, right? And we hear consistently that we have infrastructure deficiencies. And I just want to make sure that we're actually getting to them and addressing them. And we don't have a tip, and we don't have a lot of plans for these capital projects that really need to get done. So I just, I want to know how we're going to get to a plan to getting those capital projects completed.
Well, part of it is establishing that, in fact, the council has the desire to allocate capital funds for capital projects. And we were in the middle of COVID, didn't know where it was going to go, what else was going to happen with our own economy for the city, and, as I said, trying to retool and reestablish where we were going to go forward. And so you stop and you take a pause, and it'll take a little bit to catch up and reestablish what that is. Just like in the $920,000 that the public works director and I came to yesterday as we were trying to reconcile Isaguac Pine Lake Road and the lack of concurrency assistance, and what the report from David Evans and Associates actually was saying, and that we were proceeding down a path of looking at a major capital project, putting more design money in it, that wasn't, didn't seem to be like it was accomplishing and really working towards what we thought would be the council's goals. So we made a recommendation to pull that off, and we'll come back to you with further explanations if that's needed. But that's sort of where we're at. The council can decide to allocate money. You can see you have reserves, or you can decide on financing. But when you don't have a good crystal ball, like last budget year, we were still trying to figure out how to get to a balanced budget, because your revenues from taxes was not keeping up with the growing expenditures of the city. And we still debated about what capital projects we would put in the budget. So here we are, we're getting ready to look at a mid-buy, and we can revisit all of that. The tip is a totally different issue because of where we're at with other potential legal matters. And internally, we continue to look at that and debate that. And hopefully, as we near our draft D I S, that will have more daylight. But that's as much of an explanation as I think I could provide at the moment.
Okay. Well, just for the record, Isaguac Pine Lake Road, the roundabout in front of the fire station, we know that that's a public safety issue. We know that taking out that roundabout and putting in a stoplight there would be more efficient and safer. So there's a project that, you know, we should probably be working on. We know that we have grant money for Thompson Hill Road to work on the stormwater and flooding issues. There are capital projects that we need to be doing, and I would like to see us get some plans in place to make that happen. I do have one other question on the list of
Okay, just a moment. On the intersection by the fire station is an item that was in the David Evans and Associates' report. And I can have Jeff speak to that issue, or we can bring it back up later, because it is marginally supportive of making some changes. And the David Evans approach or report did not have an equitable look at different alternatives.
Okay, can we stick, can we stick to the budget at the moment? Can we stay on? We're going to stick, yeah, we've got a motion on the floor, and we're going to stick to the budget issue right now.
Okay. Sure, I have a question on page 106 in the packet, where it talks about the legal fees. We have almost $500,000 of legal fee carryforward. Can we get a little more information on what that number represents?
That was a balance that was in that fund. And given the multitude of legal issues that are going on, we made a recommendation just to carry that forward in case it was necessary to use it this year.
So it says it's an expense carryforward. So does that mean that it's adding money into the budget, or it's expenses that weren't spent in 2020? I'm just trying to understand what that number represents there.
Erin, do you have a better explanation?
Yes, so that's money that was saved from 2020. So it was budgeted in 2020, and we're moving it into 2021.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Erin, I have four or five questions for you. In the personnel savings area, there was a fairly large amount, which made me wonder what the authorized headcount for the city is, and what is the actual headcount? Let's come back.
Go ahead, Erin.
Erin, before you answer that, it's the bewitching hour, and I need to extend.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to extend. 10:30?
You better go to 11, we have a lot
Okay, let's go to 11.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to extend to 11. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a 6-1. Thank you.
So the, I was able to look up the number for you. So FTE count at the end of 2020, so in December 2020, actual FTEs were 112 FTEs, and the budget was 131.25. So we averaged vacancies, so that's just showing the month in, December. We average vacancy rate was around 20 positions for all of 2020.
Wow, okay, that's pretty significant with that headcount size. Okay. Going back to the note that came out from Public Works this afternoon, on their carryforwards, there was one you, I don't think you mentioned, or maybe you did. It's the 1.91 million for overlay funding. This should be carried forward someplace.
Yeah, so the recommendation there was that the dollars be carried forward. It's just the project that it was attached to may change. So in the packet, it had the 1091,500. This is on page 106 of the packet, for those that are tracking along. So public works carryforward, 1091,500 was the requested carryforward. The amount stays in as it's related to the overlay program, so it's still overlay program dollars in the operating fund. So that's why it stays as included in the request. But the email was identifying from Jeff that the project of which overlay is done may change. So that's the piece that may change.
As long as it's overlay someplace, I'm good. If it's being grabbed to go somewhere else, I'm not good.
Yeah, it's in the overlay account number.
On the issue of interfund loan, the 9 million, why don't we just transfer the funds from someplace else instead of going through this?
We went with the loan because we don't know exactly how much is going to be needed. So we didn't want to just transfer 9 million to the Transportation CIP fund if they only needed 4 million or 2 million. And that changes as we go through the year, because Isaguac Falls City Road was the driver for spending a lot of money. It's done. But the real estate excise tax that comes into that fund to pay for the projects comes in over the whole course of the year. So we don't, we probably won't get the money to pay it back until later in the year.
Okay.
So it's the timing and the kind of the fluidity of that throughout the year. So as we true up that number, that would be part of the budget modification. So if there is, ends up not being enough to repay it, then that's when we would be requesting a transfer.
I've known you guys long enough to take your word for it. Okay, on page, I think it was 10, where was it? Oh, yeah, still page 106, under fire. What happened there? We got hit for 176 K of additional expense that wasn't budgeted because they budgeted more than we did?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
So the FAC committee, the Eastside Fire and Rescue FAC committee, looked at the budget that was presented by Eastside Fire and Rescue and said, oh, yeah, this looks good, recommended it to the board. And then we put together the city budget using that number. And when it actually went to the EFOR board, they voted for a higher budget than the FAC committee had recommended.
Okay. Okay. Lastly, looking at the ending fund balances and all accounts, parks is really healthy. Is, and considering we have requests for things like M O C and rebuilding fire stations, et cetera, can we borrow some of that money, too?
So some of that fund balance that's in the park capital fund at the end of 2022 would be restricted REIT proceeds. So we'd have to look at that for, depending on the type of project that we're envisioning. So a fire station wouldn't be an eligible use of REIT, but an M O C facility, we'd have to check the REIT restrictions in order to see if that's eligible to be spent on REIT. So it's something that we could look into for the potential use, but there are restrictions of the park capital fund balance that we'd want to check to make sure that's an eligible project use.
Erin, I'd like to hear how much of that could be redeployed for some other purpose at some point. Also, the REIT division between streets and parks is a council decision. And at some point in time, I would encourage this council to take a look at that split again, because we may have higher needs elsewhere. Which brings me to another issue. Hold on. Oh, I'll come back to that. It'll come up in one of the other items. That's all my questions, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Ross, are you? Okay, so Councilmember Stewart, have you talked on this topic?
I think I have.
I think you have.
I did, yeah.
Okay, so let me, let me see if anybody else, otherwise I do have one question, but let me see, does anybody else have a question? Okay. And let me see if I can find my notes on this. This had to do with the park impact fees being down, but the REIT fees were up. But yet, the sale of homes is up. So I was trying to, in my mind, see how the park impact fees, which are collected on the sale of homes, would be
No, they're not collected on the sale of homes. They're, the impact fees are associated with the permits.
Oh, they're associated with the permits which are done, okay, got it. Okay. I was drawing that blank there. Okay, never mind. Okay, so that would be then, Councilmember Stewart? That's, we're going into round two, folks. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Great, thank you. Yeah, just, I mean, budget-wise, again, we had 28 million of planned expenditures in 2020 that we didn't spend the money on. I don't know that we need to be looking at cutting spending on our parks, or cutting, you know, expending because of the maintenance and operations centers. I think we have a lot of capital projects that need to be done, and year over year, we don't, we don't achieve what we plan on doing. And we need to figure out how we fix that and actually start getting some of these capital projects done. And I don't think we need to take money from the parks. The parks are one of our biggest assets. The community loves our parks. I think we found our parks to be quite the refuge, particularly during COVID. And I don't think we should be cutting any spending on our parks at this point in time. But just my opinion, but I know we've gotten a lot of positive feedback
Councilmember, did you have a question?
On opening up Big Rock Park.
Do you have a question on the budget?
I was just responding to other comments talking about, no, ma'am.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on the budget? Okay. Okay, so we have a, we have got a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Could you please repeat your motion?
I move that the council adopt an ordinance to amend the 2021-2022 biennial budget for carryforwards, less the carryforward of $920,000. The adjustments related to prior council direction, including the interfund loan, and then new federal funding.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor. And it was seconded by Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Gambon. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need to amend that? I'm sorry.
I did not have any amendments that were made.
I'm not sure we accounted for the adjustment.
We do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we might have.
Adjustments were accounted for.
Adjustments were accounted for.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we've got 7, 7, 0. Excellent. Nice job, Aaron. Okay, nice job, council. We got through that at a whole lot of pain. Okay, so, next up is the Sammish Maintenance and Operations Center. And I'm not, Anjaleek, is that you?
I'm not sure if you had the financial management or financial report that you pulled, was pulled from consent. I don't know if that's.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I've got a 17A here, correct. And that is number nine from the consent, you're right, from the consent. Very good.
What's that?
Good catch.
So, if you want me to go ahead and speak to that.
Could you speak to that? That'd be great.
So, that, the report that was included on the consent calendar is a new summary of sorts that is summarizing the financial management report. That's an 82-page report that council gets monthly. So, this was just taking a snapshot through the April timeframe. So, it was the most up-to-date information we had at the time that we're compiling that report. And so, that was what was collected into that report. So, it's an informational piece only. There's no, no action required. We're just sharing information on how the city is progressing in 2021. Now that we remind the council tonight and the public about 2020 position, talked about the carryforward. So, the third piece was to take a look at 2021. And so, that's what that report was doing, is providing some information there. The council will be receiving the normal May monthly reports. Probably within the, by the end of this week, actually, you'll get the normal financial management report. That's a monthly report showing results through May. So, that's what that report is.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Stewart, did that answer your question?
Sorry, couldn't get to my go-to-meeting screen there. It does, I guess, it, it still leaves a little bit of question mark where we show that we're still coming up really, you know, we're not, you know, I mean, on one hand, it seems good. We're not spending the money per the budget. But what concerns me is, are we getting our projects done? When we're not spending all of the planned expenditures, that tells me that maybe we're not getting all of our work done. And I guess I'd like to have a little bit more information on that and not just be like, woo-hoo, we have money in the bank. That money gets collected in taxes to, to serve a purpose. And I want to make sure we're achieving that. And I, I guess I didn't see where that was really called out as to what it is we're not getting done.
Okay. Can, Aaron, you wanna?
So, just to clarify, this, that report is through the first four months of the budget. So, we're in the new budget cycle. It's 21 and 22. So, 24-month budget cycle. You're showing activity through the first four months of that 24-month period. So, yes, there's not a lot of expenditures in that first quarter. There would be more information as we progress through the year. But it is noted that, you know, some of these projects haven't yet started yet, particularly on the capital side.
And I believe.
But just some feedback for the city manager. It might be helpful when, when we get these reports to also get the, you know, a little bit of an explanation as to, you know, how, how does this look, not just from a elapsed time, from a budget perspective, but what's the plan, right? If the plan was that we had capital projects that should have been starting, have they started? Or is the plan that they're all going to happen in the summer? So, we'll see a big spike because many of those projects only can occur during the dry months or something. It would be helpful to understand that.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, yeah. It'd be interesting to see, especially, I know a lot of companies are behind on their projects due to COVID. So, it'll be interesting to see where we are. Okay, so the next thing up is our Sammish Maintenance and Operations. And, and who's going to be speaking to this this evening?
That'll be.
Ah, there she is.
Madam Mayor, that would be me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. And we have for your consideration this evening the approval of a contract with CCON LLC for the Maintenance and Operations Center Expansion Project. A detailed presentation was provided to City Council at the study session last week. And based on the general direction we have, we received, we have brought back all the bid schedules for your approval. This does involve a transfer of 2.5 million from the general fund. And so, we have brought this topic to you after you've heard from Aaron about the budget. And if you are comfortable with what you've heard, then the staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with CCON LLC for the Maintenance and Operations Center Expansion Project to include all bid schedules, administer a construction contingency, and approve carryforward requests and a capital transfer of 2.5 million from the general fund to fully fund the project. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Madam Mayor, for questions or for your discussion.
Okay, I'm going, okay, looking at the chat box. We're going to start with Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we postpone action on this until July so that the staff can get the information previously requested on the number of capital projects that are out there and what the total rollup is. We talked last week about Station 82 as well, and then maybe others out there. I am, for one, am very curious as to what the total bill might be that we're looking at. So, that's the basis for my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the.
Mayor and council, I think it would be.
Go ahead.
There's no second.
There was an important point I wanted Anjali to make regarding her bids. Thank you.
City Manager, I'm not sure what you wanted me to say here, but if this project doesn't start right now, we aren't going to have a dry season to be able to construct it. And we also have a certain timeline within which we have to award the bid or we would have to reject it and basically open it up to bids again.
Thank you. That was the point I was trying to make. I knew there was a deadline on the bids. Thank you. Just for council to take into consideration.
Okay, we have a motion that was made. Do I hear a second or? Okay, then we're going to move forward to the next question. That is Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the contract with CCON for the Maintenance and Operations Center Expansion Project.
Second.
And I'll speak to my motion. Councilmember Odell, I appreciate your concern. But as I recall from this conversation, we need to move forward with these Maintenance and Operations Centers. They are severely undersized. And to Anjali's point, we need a dry season to get some of this work done before we get into our next winter and potentially have emergency situations that we need to be able to deal with. And our, our operation staff, our Maintenance and Operations staff need the space. So, these are long overdue projects. The bid, the bid looks pretty good to me. And I just think we need to, we need to bite the bullet and get some of these capital projects done. So, thank you to the staff for all the work you've put into this.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I'm not in the queue. I seconded the motion, but I'm not in the queue. I think we spoke about this last week at length.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
This is a must-do, in my opinion. It's the core of our operations. And also, related to this new MOC expansion would also protect valuable assets for the city. So, it really has a twofold imperative that we need to fund. And it also will be cheaper to fund it now than fund it later. So, I just think we need to get started. I totally respect what Councilmember Odell stated. But this is one that you just have to do. It's the core of our service to our citizens.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, so what I, clarifying question on your, on the motion, Madam Mayor, would be, would that, does the motion also include all bid schedules, administration of the construction contingency, approval of a carryforward request, and a capital transfer of 2.5 mil from the general fund to fully fund the project? And the reason for my question was, in the presentation last week, there was a talk about funding this maybe in a different way over time instead of just funding it straight up. So, my, my question then is of the, of the council or the person who made the, the council member that made the motion, does this include that it is the capital transfer from the general fund and fully funding it? Is, is that part of the motion?
Yes, Councilmember Trine, thank you for your question. And to clarify, yes, I should have read the entire recommendation from staff. But it would be, it would be to follow the staff's recommendation to authorize the execution of the contract, including all the bid schedules, administer the construction contingency, and approve the carryforward requests and a capital transfer of 2.5 million from the general fund. And especially given the fact that we just saw that we had 20, 28 million of capital expenditures, money that carry forward from 2020, I don't think we'll have any trouble covering that. So, thank you for that clarification or clarifying question.
Yeah, with that being stated, I would be in support of the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. Okay, any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0.
Thank you.
Next up is the YMCA Advisory Board. And who is here to speak?
And that would be me again.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. So, the next item is to appoint a member of City Council to serve on the YMCA Advisory Board. And this is in accordance with the city's operating agreement with the YMCA for the Community and Aquatic Center, wherein the YMCA was required to establish and maintain a local volunteer board of managers to assist with providing strategic direction for the facility work plan, community engagement, fundraising, et cetera. And the board members would consist of a majority of Sammish residents. And in addition to that, a member of the City Council and staff representation as well. The advisory board meetings occur on the fourth Thursday of every month. And it's been a while since a council member has participated in these meetings. Of course, the meetings didn't really happen regularly last year due to COVID. So, with the staff changes, both on the YMCA side and from the city side, we have been reading the agreement and wanted to make sure that we bring this forward to council and have you appoint one member to serve on the board. That is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, so I am going to open this up for first to see if we have volunteers. And I'm assuming this would be till the end of the year and then we can add it to our list for the next year. So, let's, Councilmember Stewart, I saw your hand first. Are you volunteering? Okay, so let's get a list of hands here. Okay, Councilmember Ross and Councilmember Trine. Okay, so we have three people volunteering. Okay, so, do you guys, who, okay, so we have three people? All right. Huh, pardon? Yeah.
I'll, I'll withdraw and, and I'll withdraw and put my support behind Councilmember Ross. That's fine.
Okay. So, we've got Councilmember Ross and Councilmember Trine. What are you?
All right, you guys are having a conversation without lights on, so we can't hear you guys.
So, I make a motion that we appoint Chris Ross as the City Council, of the City Council to serve on the YMCA Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay. Benny, I don't see anything. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I think that was an aye. Okay. All right, so, I think you'll do a good job. You were working on the contract stuff before, so. And I wanted to point out, can you make sure that we still have a room available every once in a while? Okay, the next thing up is the response to former elected official's letter to the GMPC. And who is on with this one? Lisa?
Mayor, yes, Mayor, no one else is jumping to the opportunity to talk about this. I will. So, the city sent a letter to the GMPC on June 2nd. There was some discussion and debate among council members as to whether this item should have come to a public meeting for approval. And so, the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to make that, to have a discussion about that and to solicit whether council members are in agreement with having sent that item in behalf of to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I saw your name in there. Okay. All right, do we have any questions for Lisa? Okay, I don't think we have any questions. So, I think what the goal is then is that you wanted this. Pardon? I got people in delay, so it's kind of.
I said I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to move that we formally adopt this, um, support for the, the letter to the GMA, uh, or, excuse me, to the GMPC.
Second.
I'd like to, point of order.
Okay, please make your point.
Yeah, uh, the point that I would like to make is that this letter was written, reviewed, and approved, uh, and sent as an official city response to the GMPC, uh, by part of the elected body, purposefully and knowingly excluding, uh, at least one member of the elected body, and outside of public view and discussion, violating our own council rules, uh, not to mention disregard for democracy and potentially the OPMA. Uh, and this motion to approve something that's already been done, uh, in my mind, uh, is, is moot, uh, and it does not rectify, uh, by trying to retroactively approve something that was already done, does not rectify anything, and if anything, is just an admission of wrongdoing.
So...
So I object to the motion on the principle that it's moot, it's already been done.
Okay, and I do believe, um, Lisa, I think you have answered all of her questions, at least I have. Do you want to, I, I have seen you answer them on email. Would you like to respond?
No, I've answered all of Councilmember Stewart's questions. I have nothing else to say.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Pardon, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Um, the motion was moved and seconded. I'd like the, uh, the, the motion, please.
And I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, I don't mean to, any disrespect, but, Madam Mayor, you didn't rule on my point of order.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I disagree with the point because I-
Can you hear me back connection? I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I, I asked-
I disagree with the point because I believe that the point has already been settled before the meeting. Okay, so now we need to wait for Deputy Mayor to come back somehow, because she made, oh-
Can I speak to my motion?
Oh, yes, please speak to the motion.
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I took, I took my camera off, because when my camera is on, it is sucking bandwidth, and I get cut off. I'm sorry, I've had such bandwidth issues here tonight. Um, so I want to speak to the motion, and I'm going to speak to some of Councilmember Stewart's points. First, I actually believe that Councilmember Stewart is correct. We should not be excluding any council member from our correspondence regardless of what we think or assume. We should not be making assumptions when we put these things out for council consideration. Um, I do, um, want to reconfirm our position. Um, I do believe in the merits of the letter, but I disagree with the method to which it came to fruition. Thank you.
I think we lost City Hall again.
We can hear you, Pam. Lisa?
We can, we can, oh, there you are.
Yeah, I'm here, Council.
Okay, it just went quiet for a while.
Yeah, we don't hear, Kristi Mauchow dropped off.
I don't think, uh, we can't hear Kristi.
She said, "Thank you." I heard what you said.
I don't know if everyone else did. Did City Hall hear me speaking or not?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Kristi, we're here, but-
I think it's definitely City Hall.
Okay, no, unfortunately, I don't have any-
Kristi, could you repeat, could you repeat your, what you said? Because I don't know that City Hall heard everything you said.
I'm not sure they're going to hear it the second time if I repeat it. I'm just saying, I, I believe in the merits of the letter that we put forth to the GMPC. However, I disagree with the way it came to bear. I don't believe that we should be excluding any council members from any communication on this, and they were done with assumptions that were, um, incorrect, and I think we just, going forward, we need to be very careful about how we proceed on these things and not excluding council members on assumptions. Thank you.
Count, Deputy Mayor Mauchow, what assumptions were incorrect?
Lisa, your email stated you assumed Councilmember Stewart had a position in mind. That was, your assumption said that it was based on what she said at GMPC at the May meeting. I watched the meeting, she said nothing.
She did make, at the GMPC meeting, Deputy Mayor Mauchow and her voting record-
Relative to affordable housing.
Which goes back to November 2nd, rejecting our target. So because of the attorney-client privilege, desire not to compromise their legal position, I did not include her because I know her to be, um, in agreement with the position that we have not taken. Now, as a, your attorney, I think, uh, in communications where I am providing legal strategy.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Lisa?
I'm not sure.
I thought it would be dangerous if I started including all council members in communications where I know some council members have positions adverse to the position taken by a majority of the other council members, particularly here in Gerent and SCCA. I stand by my position.
Okay, um, with that, we have a motion on the floor. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to ask you to repeat your motion.
Yes, my motion was simply to reconfirm the City Council's support to the letter that was dated May 27th, 2021, to the GMPC.
Okay, we have the motion, and we have the second. We've had discussion. All those in favor, um, of the letter, say aye.
No.
Aye.
No, I'm sorry, there are still people in the queue. There are still people in the queue. There are still people in the queue, Madam Mayor.
Wait, 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 wait. Let me go back and make sure I picked up everybody in the queue. Goodness, 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 hang on.
I'm in the queue, I thought. Yeah, I'm in the queue. After Kristi.
Oh, okay, let me go.
Yeah.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you, I'd call for the question.
You guys are killing me here.
Trying to do Robert's Rules of Order. Call for the question.
Okay.
Take a vote on, call for the question, please.
Yes, let's take a vote on, all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we're going to call the question. So, um, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay. Because you brought it forward to get everybody's discussion, and then you cut off the discussion anyway.
Don't waste our time.
Wow. Point of order, Madam Mayor?
Please make your point.
Uh, Councilmember Trine just told me to stop wasting everyone's time. I find that to be, uh, against our council rules, uh, on a number of fronts, and just inappropriate.
Yes, we need to, you guys, it's getting late, and I know this council, they get very grouchy by 11 o'clock. Let's keep our comments to ourselves. But there wasn't anybody who didn't get to speak on this, and that, Councilmember Stewart, you did as well, you did get to speak. So, um, moving forward, we're going to go to the next thing.
So is my point well taken?
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our list is the potential, potential, potential cancellation of July 20th, 21 city council meeting. And that looks actually very exciting to me. So, uh, Dave? Oh, oh, hey, all right. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Uh, this item is simply to, uh, consider whether or not the council would like to cancel their meeting on July 20th, 2021. There are currently no agenda items scheduled for that meeting, and it is also the last, uh, regular scheduled meeting before the council's August recess.
Okay, we're going to, um, they can't hear, we're going to check it out.
Do what?
Check 1-2, check 1-2. Check. Check, can you hear? Check.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please hit followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not-
Checking, can you guys hear me?
No, don't hear anything. Here we go. Action.
All right. Councilmember Stewart, can you hear me?
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Deputy Mayor? Are you with us?
She's here.
I'm here. We got you.
All right.
I can hear you too, Mayor.
Let's, let's hurry and get this done. Okay, did everybody hear Mr. Sugg speak about the meeting on the 20th? Or did everybody drop off? Okay. Mr. Sugg, start again.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Council, Mr. City Manager, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst. Uh, this agenda item is simply to, uh, for the council to consider whether or not they would like to cancel their regular meeting on July 20th, 2021. Currently, there are no agenda items scheduled for the July 20th meeting, and it is also the last regularly scheduled meeting before the council's August recess. So with that, we'll turn it over to the council for discussion.
Okay, that is very exciting. Um, now, if we do this, I'm still going to be very excited if we get that far, and, because we didn't have a break last summer, so if we get that far, and we end up having work, that means, are we able to then reschedule? Should we?
Yes, we'd be able to reschedule a meeting, just like you would for any other special meeting with 24 hours' notice.
Okay. Okay, so, um, okay, does anybody, okay, Councilmember Ross?
Kind of inversely, um, made my point, comment in that, because it feels early to cancel a date that's more than a month away. I'd rather consider canceling this during the first meeting of July, when we see where we are on our schedules, our, and, and progress on our agendas, and if anything else pops up that we need to get done before the recess. So I would prefer that we make that call in July 6th meeting.
Is, is there a problem with bringing it back at the next meeting?
Not at all.
And is, um, let's-
There's no problem.
Okay, let's go.
We'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Um, Councilmember Odell?
I was just going to say, I completely agree with Councilmember Ross. I think it's way too early. And frankly, uh, if we can find some things to move into, uh, that date that, uh, maybe lighten up a previous meeting, that would be okay, too.
Deputy Mayor?
Compared with both the previous comments.
Okay, so, um, I guess then we will just have you bring it back in July. Okay, so that leads us to, uh, council reports. Deputy Mayor?
It's loading, or not. I have really bad bandwidth. I think there was something on here I wanted to mention. It's being really slow. Sorry, I'm having, there we go, finally. Oh, I did engage with staff relative to this Affordable Housing Dashboard, just because, um, SCA wanted to make sure that the numbers married up, so, um, David Pyle is in contact, um, with SCA and the county, just to make sure that the dashboard has accurate numbers. If you haven't looked at it, it's worth taking a peek at. Just note that the numbers are from 2017. I'm not terribly selective necessarily of what's going on here, but, um, I think that would be the only notable on my council report.
Okay, I saw that in email, so that's great. Okay, um, Councilmember Odell?
Thank you, I have a couple of things. First of all, uh, in the write-up tonight on, um, the Park and Ride, there was a number of things that were mentioned that could be done to, uh, assist our position of retaining funding at an earlier date, and I agree with that. Uh, I've, at the ETP meetings I've been to so far, I've been to two of them, I've been kind of disappointed in the fact that, uh, there's a lot of talking and not much action nor planning. And I think this is a good opportunity for, uh, those of us who are on ETP to try to change that into something productive, and I will work on that in the future. Secondly, uh, I had the pleasure of attending the, uh, ribbon cutting of Big Rock Park the other day, and I think, uh, that is a tremendous gift to the city, and, uh, we owe a large degree of gratitude to Mary Piggott, who has spent an awful lot of money on her own to make that park the wonderful place that it is. And, uh, at some point in time, uh, I hope we find an appropriate way to thank her. I know the council's already thanked her in the past, uh, but I think we need to do it again. Every time she gives us a chunk, we should again say thank you. Lastly, and this is difficult, um, at the end of our council session last week, we had an executive session. That was a difficult issue. It was contentious, but, uh, I walked out of the room afterward, and apparently after I did, there were some remarks made about me and my daughter, and, uh, they were crude, crass, and of a sexual nature- of a sexual nature. This is reported to me in an email and a phone call from two different council members. And to say I was upset would be a vast understatement. It took me, guys, three days to cool down to write the memo I did about the hot mic that were caught, the remarks that were made. And there were at least two council members and maybe three involved. And frankly, the incident that happened is a violation of Paragraph 2.7.1 of our council's Rule of Procedures, which prohibits council members from making personal attacks and negative comments about another council member. In this case, both a negative comment and a personal attack definitely occurred here per the wording of the section of our rules, and are subject to punishment as defined under 2.7.1. I expect and demand a written apology to both my daughter and myself from the individuals involved. And I think what happened there should not happen to any of us. Yeah, we can disagree. Yeah, we had information that was made available to us just by pure luck that was corroborating some other things we were discussing. I am just absolutely disgusted at the nature of the comment. This is a public broadcast, so I'm not going to tell you what the words were, but you can probably imagine what they might have been. What happened is absolutely nothing to help establish a environment of trust and mutual respect in this group. Having said that, I am still awaiting an apology from the people involved. Madam Mayor, that's the end of my council report.
And with that, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
I think Deputy Mayor wants to make a comment.
Okay, so wait a minute.
City Manager would like to make a report.
Okay. City Manager, please.
I'm checking the...
Oh, wait a minute. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I sent a...
I think Councilmember Stewart's in the queue before I am.
Go ahead. Please go ahead.
So I was just going to say that the comments that were overheard were about several of us on the council, and so I'll pile on and ask for an apology as well.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just would like to reiterate that I find it troubling that a city attorney can unilaterally or collaboratively with some small group of people decide which elected members to read into critical information and which elected members can make decisions on official city positions.
Okay, Councilmember...
I just...
You've already been on record with that.
That's the only democratic thing I've ever heard.
You've already been on record with that for tonight, but thank you. Okay, so now we're going to... Dave, do you have your report?
Actually, Christie was up next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. Christie made her...
This is Chris. I'm in the queue. This is Chris. I'm in the queue. And like Deputy Mayor Malchow, other council members were mentioned in the hot mic, and I appreciate an apology as well.
Make that four right over here.
Okay. So, anybody else want to jump in the queue? Okay. I was in the room, so... All right. Now, Dave?
Thank you. A tragic accident occurred over the weekend. I sent the council a letter that I would like them to allow their approval for the mayor to sign along with me. I would send it over to Chief Diaz. Officer Lexi Harris was killed over the weekend, an officer from Seattle PD, while coming to the aid of others. And Chief Diaz is a close acquaintance and friend of my family's, and I wanted to reach out, and I just thought it maybe be appropriate for the mayor to co-sign with me on a letter of condolence. But I didn't want a letter to go out with the mayor's signature without having authorization from the council. So I look for acknowledgement or approval.
Mayor in the queue.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I've got Deputy Mayor who is in the chat, so... Deputy Mayor, did you have a question on the letter?
I have a comment. My preference would be that it's not just simply addressed to the police chief, but I would like to add in the entire Seattle Police Department. On the two lines, please.
I second that suggestion.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Dave, thanks for... I know this is personal on a certain level for you, and I appreciate you putting this together. I also appreciate you bringing this to council, recognizing that the mayor should not sign on to any official city position without the approval of the council, and I hope that we can consistently apply that rule. Thank you. And I'll pile on and say that I wouldn't mind getting my apology from the council as well. And Madam Mayor, I would like to ask that you make sure that when council members make comments, that they are not in any way threatening in nature during the council meetings, because at the end of the last council meeting, Councilmember Trine made comments that I think could be perceived in a threatening nature, and I think that that is wholly inappropriate
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? I did not hear him. I wasn't in the room. I don't know what happened. I must have been in space last week. Okay. So, any other comments? Okay. Motion to dismiss?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Sure you do.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 I can...
I take that as a seven zero. Okay. Hey, everybody, have a good Fourth of July. We'll see everybody in July.